Let's start. Okay, you ready? Alan, who's who's doing it? Ken? Alan?
I'm doing it. Yeah, I'm under Ken's name, but it's me. I'm doing it.
Very well. Okay, okay. I want to welcome everyone for the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal for tonight's meeting. It is apparently on Zoom. It's six thirty-five P M. And I want to apologize that we have to be on Zoom again because the whole town is in Zoom, so we have to do that because the COVID outbreak. I want to call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. I'm just gonna say the name and you guys just say yes or present. So I'm gonna start with Troy. Troy Larson, our associate.
Present.
Okay, Veronica, the Veniz, a regular member.
Present.
Richard Sample, member.
Present.
Jim Akabachi, a clerk.
Yeah.
Okay. And my son, and did I miss anybody? And myself, the chair, Nazir Alcolasi, that's five, right? Do I have also one, two, three, four, five? Okay. All right, let's do the preliminary business. The meeting minutes, who read the minutes? Jimmy or Richard?
I didn't get a chance to read them, so. I'm glad to sign them if somebody else has reviewed them.
I I read June ninth and June twenty-third. I didn't see July and September in an email, so.
Yeah, those are sorry, July and September, they were already done. And we didn't realize it till after the fact. So the June ninth to twenty-third are the only two new ones that you guys would be approving tonight. The other ones are already approved and and done, so.
So you need the Alan, you need the June nine and the twenty-third?
Yeah, those are the only two that are up for approval tonight. There was four done and they're put on the agenda. Then after the fact, we realized that the fourteenth and the one in September were already completed and recorded. So just the ninth and the twenty-third.
All right, very good. Who, Richard, you had a chance to look at them?
Yes, I did, sir.
You you comfortable with them?
Yes, I am comfortable with them.
Veronica?
Yeah, I agree.
All right, Troy. Just Troy. Take your mute button, right? There's a button. Just push mute on your computer. Take the mute out.
Yes, I agree.
All right, okay, I guess if you, three of you agree, can I have a motion to to send the minutes?
No move by Jim.
Jim, okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes by Jim. Do I have a second?
By a second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
Jim, aye.
Okay, Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And just for the record, Troy, we say in in the seat, on Jake's seat all night, so he'll be voting for Jake. For Jake Morrison. All right, very good. We gotta go to Woodland Cove. Notice of project change, change on subsidy program choice substantial or unsubstantial or and approval necessary. Just for the record, Attorney Freeman had talked to me, explained it to me. I didn't understand it well, so Mr. Freeman, Counselor, you want to explain it to the rest of the board, see what's up?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant. And from the applicant Dakota Mumar Hermenstein is with me. Basically, as you probably know from being in town, the first phase phase of this forty B has started. It's under construction. And the next phase is going to be starting very soon. The next phase has actually been labeled on the plans that were approved with the permit and the modifications there, too, is called Phase Three, but the provision and the change modification that we had approved by the zoning board just about exactly a year ago, it was January sixth of twenty twenty-one, allow noted and approved that phases two and three were entertain changeable. And there's no substantive change that we're coming with you tonight in terms of the project or anything at all. It's just that the forty B regulations do require that a zoning board be told and approve the change of a financing program, the subsidy agency. So this had been low income tax credit project and program in the first phase. It is now being financed by mass housing under their mixed income rental financing program. So everything else applies that that is in the permit still applies. The only change is that for some reason, the regulations say that, you know, the zoning board can look at it and approve it as an insubstantial change. The insubstantial change regulations have guidelines which say that typically a request for change in the subsidy program is considered insubstantial. It is your discretion, but in a nutshell, you know, tonight, if you find it insubstantial, then it's basically deemed approved. There does not need to be any public hearing. If you find that it is substantial, then it's not denied. It's just that you would have to send the Butters notices out and advertise for a public hearing within thirty days. So that's basically the gist of it. So it's pretty straightforward. It happens sometimes that, you know, especially with the phase project that they change, they change a subsidy program. It's it's very likely to still be the low income housing tax credit program for the final phase. But tonight it's for the mass housing financing program. So that's it. If you have any questions, naturally happy to to answer.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Let's Veronica, let's start by Veronica.
Will the financial change have an impact on the timeframe for development?
Nope, nope. In fact, they're moving even faster than they contemplated because they started. Think the closing was in the fall on the first phase and now I think the closing may well be scheduled for next week, if I'm not mistaken. So they're moving right ahead. They're all set.
Thank you.
Richard?
At this time.
I think, Jim?
I'm ready to make a motion to find it nonsubstantial.
Troy?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, anyone on the on the public want to comment on that project? Okay, fine, if not, else if you want to close it or vote it nonsubstantial, whatever you guys want. So what's the wishes?
Again, I moved to call it nonsubstantial. I don't believe we need to close the the public portion, but if we do, then in order, close and then find it nonsubstantial.
Counselor, do we need to close? There's no no need, right?
No, because it's correct. It's administrative. It's not a hearing, so you don't need to. Thanks.
Just so I have a motion by Jim Akabachi that Woodland Cove change on subsidy program is not substantial change. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Veronica?
Aye.
Richard? Okay, Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, aye, Carrie. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good evening.
All right, good evening. Continue public hearing sixty-four dash twenty-one. The seventeen Murphy Street. All right, who's representing Murphy Street?
Hi, Attorney Morton here.
Hi, good evening. Public hearing still open. Just state your name and let's see where we are.
Sure. Gillian Morton, one eighty-four Main Street. So we're here again with revised architectural, which maybe Aaron can pull up or I can share my screen. Hopefully you all were given that rendering regarding what we took from comments from the first hearing about the height of this new construction. If you recall, this is the site that had had buildings on it prior to Hurricane Bob. And we were working with the community and and with your feedback as well to figure out something that would work for the neighborhood. So we're able to create a rendering that was under thirty-five, so it's it's does not need a variance for height at this time, and we're just looking for that lot size. So we're we're still under, you know, thirty thousand square feet in this district and we have twenty thousand five hundred. So really just willing to hear any, yep, we can pull it up. Excellent. So you can see in in the comparison, if you still have your packet, that whole third floor and that whole tower was removed. So so we've really tried to work hard to get under that threshold and create something that would be in compliance with that zoning requirement.
Okay, so Counselor, you're only looking relief on the on the square foot that you have the front of just square footage, right?
Correct.
All right, does everyone recall the case? Start by Veronica.
I'm just reviewing it a little bit. Is this the one that's Swiss Beach area?
Right.
Seventeen Murphy Street. It is a lot right on the on the water. And I do want to just speak to, I know there were some other letters. I don't know if they came in before the prayer hearing or kind of in between. Some of the concerns from the public regarding, I know beach access is a concern. We talked about that the first hearing, that this isn't going to impede on any right of way to the access that's parallel to the lot. So hopefully that would be a comfort to people to hear. They'd still be able to walk down kind of the the public way down Murphy Street to get to the beach there. This lot is wooded and is really, people kind of cut through it, but it's it's private property.
Okay, they, I do, I know this property very well. They they cut in the front, so that that sandy road, that's a public road, so it's not gonna like stop people from going for any shape or forms. So they only cut in the front to go to the little dinghies there. That's all. So just go around. That's all. All right, Jimmy, what do you think?
Sorry. I've seen the plans. I've seen the plans. I'm very familiar with the location, the lot, everything. I'm I'm all prepared to make a motion for affirmative action and just let them go ahead.
All right, let me hear from Richard. What do you think, Richard?
Everything looks good. Excuse me, but I'm just curious. Most of the houses are up on stilts. I noticed that this has got a some kind of a foundation. Are these all breakaway panels or whatnot? On on the first floor?
Through the chair, I do have the applicant is here who can kind of speak to the the building aspect there. Scott, are you there? You want to answer that question?
Yes, it is on stilts and those are breakaway walls. It's also on stilts.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. Troy, do you have a question?
I don't. My only concern initially was the height and they've addressed that, so I'm good.
Mister Pichet, you're here for why? Mister Pichet?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here just because I wanted to say that for me, I have a bit of a concern with considering a variance to allow construction on this lot, which is in a high hazard flood zone. You know, it's one thing to allow construction on lots that are conforming, but to also now start allowing non-buildable lots to have these areas be constructed on. To me, it doesn't make sense in these high hazard flood zones. So I just wanted to express that point. You know, this this could present a problem if we do have a significant coastal storm where this structure could be damaged and cause damage to neighboring properties. So I just wanted to be on the record as saying, I don't think this is a wise thing to do. And just wanted to say that I would recommend that this variance not be approved. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. I'm sure there'll be before you board and you could express this more over on that case. All right, and who else I didn't ask? Veronica, you want to say anything else on it?
Yeah, I I have a couple of questions. So the the building says that there was a dwelling on this property that was demolished in nineteen ninety-three. Um, I'm what's the ownership history on this property? Nineteen seventy-one, the town adopted the bylaw that went from ten thousand to thirty thousand. And I see that, you know, the house was there, but then in nineteen ninety-three it was demolished and nothing has been put there since. What what's the ownership?
Do you recall last time, last time, the gentleman, Mr. Mederos, the owner, it's been on the family? Can you explain it, Counselor? I don't I don't see Mr. Mederos tonight.
He he is here, but through the chair. If you look through the initials application that we did, there is an affidavit that kind of explains that history. If you recall, it was owned by Attorney Mederos's grandparents and one became ill and then his grand, one, both of them are are deceased now. So it kind of goes through that struggle of of the history of the property. It did have the dwelling on it and it was pre-existing non-conforming. And then it did her obviously Hurricane Bob happened. And then I did want to go through what, you know, why, why are we looking for this now? Because I think that that was something that should be addressed. And if you look through his through his packet, you should be able to kind of see that history. And Attorney is here as well, I believe. Alan?
Veronica, you want to hear it from Mr. Mederos himself?
I'm just coming back to me a little bit. So I, it looks, I, from what I'm reading here on that affidavit, it's the Hurricane Bob, I guess, destroyed this property in nineteen ninety-one.
Correct.
So I just, I'm just trying to follow what happened a little more, and I apologize. I don't remember from the last meeting that how much detail this was discussed.
Let me, let's hear it from Attorney Mederos himself. Alan, do you mind?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, this property was owned by my grandparents since nineteen eighty. My grandfather went through a very lengthy illness, ultimately passed away in the early nineteen nineties. And then my grandmother was sick. She was able to be with us until very late in two thousand eighteen. Unfortunately, due to their health issues, neither of them were in a position to rebuild. They began to go through the process in the early nineteen nineties, but my grandfather was not able to continue. We went through the probate process and now I'm in a position to try to move forward with this.
Okay. That rings a bell, Veronica?
Yeah, and I'm reading about a few things that seemed to happen on this, the affidavit that was submitted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on the public want to speak in favor against this project?
Hi, my name's Elliot Eichenholz. I have residence at fifty-four Wackenco at Wackenco Avenue. I just want to thank the board for coming back to this meeting and the chairman and and lowering the height from the aspect of of it being a flooded area and damaged to other areas. The only neighbor that it might involve that there was structural damage would be Meg's property on on Murphy Street, but I have no objection. The homeowner has addressed it. I don't have a problem with the variance. And, you know, the right of way is there and the right of way will go down a little bit and that will stop a lot of cars maybe from driving on the beach. So I think it's going to be a positive. So as a homeowner and being at the last meeting, I just want to thank everyone and the new owner has my support to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else like to speak in favor or against?
Yeah, Meg Arsino, and I'm owner of the property at twenty Murphy Street, which is across the street from this vacant property. And my major concern was the height, how big the height was, and that has been addressed. I do agree with the previous guy that this is probably not the not the best project, the best property to to build on because it is in a high flood area and you're liable to get some water, even if not totally flooding, you're liable to get some water on this property, I think. However, the the major issue that I had was the height and that's been addressed. So I would not prohibit it based on that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Meg. Well, apparently if your house is right on the water, you you're subject to flood and everything else. That's why they designed properly to be in stilts and all that stuff to be protected from any flood. Anyway, the applicant will have to go to conservation and deal with it then. That being said, is there anyone else would like to speak in favor or against? Here and none. Counselor, anything before we close?
No, I I think, Mr. Chairman, you you said, I just wanted to make the comment with the conservation agent here that full intentions to go through that conservation process and 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 do what's right for the neighborhood. So that's the next step if if we do get a affirmative vote tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very well. Okay, that being said, can we move to close?
No move.
I have a motion to close by Jim. All in favor, say aye, Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So it's closed. Any discussion?
Make a motion to to grant relief as requested.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the variance.
Before we move on that, I can I just, I just wanted to bring up a point. Mr. Gordon Hurd had submitted a letter about this property and what he had noted is that there was
We we, it's, we have anything you discuss now on others. That's the public hearings close. We don't want to hear these letters, so.
I'm not, I'm not. I'm just bringing up the point that that was brought up, that I think we need to restrict things like a pool that was brought up and the fact that this is close to the marsh and having the chlorine. So I think we should have some restrictions.
Yeah, we will. We will go to restriction, but after the motion. So we have a motion by Jim. Any discussion on the motion or restrictions? Now you could make your more restrictions. What do you like?
I was out of sequence. Sorry about that, Jim.
That's okay.
Yeah, I don't know what the rest of the board feels on that.
So no, you could do any restriction you want. What do you like? No pool?
I would say no pool because chlorine presents a problem with the marsh being so close.
So no pool and apparently the height not over thirty-five feet. Maximum height's thirty-five. Okay? That sounds right?
Standard conditions.
Okay, and plus standard conditions? Okay, so all in favor that this project meets statutory requirement of chapter forty-eight, section seven, ten or seventeen, Counselor, is it ten? Gillian?
Sorry, I missed the last.
Where's the statutory requirements, section ten or seventeen?
Ten.
Ten, okay, so 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 the finding is that the project meets statutory requirement of chapter forty-eight sec of measure law, section ten. And so we go to Richard. Are you in favor, sir?
Yes.
Okay, Troy?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it's a go. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Right, we're gonna go to public hearing sixty-seven dash twenty-one, John C. Deekus, Appeal of Building Commissioners Action on Special Permit, twenty Burgess Point, map twenty-two lot two. Who's reading this into records?
If I sent you to Mr. Chairman, send it to yourself and Mr. Akabachi, but I have them on here if you want me to read it in.
Yeah, please read it on the record if you have it.
I will do.
Go ahead.
All right, the zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing on January twelfth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty P M in room three, well, on Zoom now to consider petition number sixty-seven twenty-one for an appeal by John C. Deekus, sixteen Winship Ave., Wareham, Massachusetts, oh two five seven one, seeking to appeal the enforcement decisions by the building inspector in regards to planning board special permit number thirteen eighteen for the clearing of more than fifty thousand square feet of trees at twenty Burgess Point Wareham, Mass., Assessors Map twenty-two lot two in the R sixty zoning district.
Okay, very well. Mr. Deekus, you starting or you have an attorney? You gotta, Mr. Deekus, you gotta move your mute point, you mute the button so we could hear you. On bottom of your screen, probably.
Bottom left corner.
Yeah, now it's good. Yeah, good. Let's see it. Just your name and address for the record first and we go from there.
Yeah, I'm John C. Deekus. I live at sixteen Winship Avenue down on Burgess Point. I I and my name is on the as as the one who submitted the appeal.
Okay.
I I need you to understand that this is not an appeal just from John C. Deekus, but it's also the neighborhood. Several neighbors are involved and and others as well. And 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 so that needs to be noted. And I also like to begin by asking a question as to a package that we prepared for the benefit of the zoning board to be distributed to each member of the board so that they can kind of get caught up in this issue prior to tonight's meeting. And I would just like to ask if every member of the of the zoning board did receive that package.
I I did see myself the package. I went through it, read it, read the case laws, all of these stuff. So I don't know about the rest of the board member. Veronica, did you read it and see it?
I didn't see anything come over. Was it emailed?
Yes. It was emailed. I can open it now and look at it. All right, Richard, did you see it?
Yes, I did, sir.
Troy?
I didn't see anything.
Jim?
I received it and reviewed it.
Okay, and I did myself. So I guess if you fill us in, Mr. Deekus, it'd probably be good help. Veronica, you could go online and look at it while Mr. Deekus speaking.
Yeah, well, it's it's a very complicated issue, Mr. Chairman, and and we thought it would be helpful to really outline some of those complexities in writing because we've done a lot of research on the events that have taken place regarding this issue. And and so I'm in Florida and I'm under COVID restrictions and I, it was my intention to come back for the hearing. And then when I heard that the that the hearing was going to goes, and and so I prepared and discussed with my neighbors and with Nora Bickie, who's providing us with a lot of assistance on research and and documentation of the events that have occurred over the last six years on this issue. As I, we we all talked and just said, because I was not able to come back and be present in the regular meeting, we all shared this information with each other. And so she tonight will make the initial presentation. I'm doing an introduction here in that regard. And also some of the neighbors are also will be speaking. And and we did not at the outset realize that we were going to have to come with our appeal to the zoning board. We thought all the business that we were doing over the years had to do strictly with with the planning board and Mr. Buckland and 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 others related to these kinds of events. And so it's with a little bit of surprise that we're here before a board who has not probably heard much about this particular situation because it began six years ago when the when the violation, the alleged violation that we're talking about occurred. And been many hearings and meetings since then all relating to the planning board, which resulted in a which resulted in planning board putting together a order of conditions on this situation, which is going to be explained in greater detail by Nora. And 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 so I I wasn't able to come back, but when I found out this thing was going to be on Zoom because of COVID, I'm on here now to introduce the subject because my name is the one that appears on the appeal. And and so let me say this, six years ago, an event took place in the town of Wareham, which I personally call an environmental crime. The crime was a destruction of five acres of pristine forest done illegally, done without notice to the town, without notice to the Butters, without notice to anybody. And when it, and and I'm giving you a little history for context. This is not I'm not dealing with these specific facts that you're about to hear. But I want you to know what the background is here because I think it's important. And so when in two thousand sixteen, we heard all this machinery going on, me and the neighbors, obviously, we we ran out and and directly across the street from my house, my driveway, freezer dropping like flies there and and with big heavy equipment, trucks and all kinds of very specialized equipment to come in and clear cut five acres of land. All of, many of us start calling the town halls, start calling various people in town government trying to understand what's going on. I got five acres of trees being chopped down across the street from my house. I've never had any notification. I've never had any Butters notification. I've never had any any legal notification through the press or in any other way. And so this came as quite a shock to all of us. Several people from the town of Wareham, officials from the town of Wareham, from conservation, from whoever the neighbors called, selectmen, planning board people, town investigators and inspectors, they all came running down. And it was decided electively, I think, and I personally talked to Ellen Slaven as well as a couple of other selectmen. And and so they all came down and then and and they put a stop to the to the cutting until more could be determined and decided. So eventually I got a call back later in the day from Mr. Slaven. And he told me, John, there's nothing we can do to stop this clear cut because of the gentleman who owns the property, Mr. Clemmie, has has indicated to us that he has an agricultural exemption by the, from the state that allows him to do this without 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 um uh, uh, without any town action. Uh, I then said to him, Alan, I said, there's town bylaws that deal with this issue, the fifty thousand square foot. Um, bylaw that somebody just mentioned, uh, for example, he didn't seem to know anything about that, so he told me. What I will do is have Mr. Requena give you a call and explain it to you in more detail. Now, I got a call from Mr. Requena shortly after that, others in the neighborhood did as well. And uh, Mr. Requena said to me, John, he says that agricultural exemption allows him to proceed without town interference. Number one, but number two, and 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 number one, and and so we're we're gonna allow him tomorrow to go in and finish that that cut. Um, and I said to him, well, how about the town bylaw, the fifty thousand square foot bylaw, article twelve is a, I can't remember. And uh, and he said, there is, I'm not familiar with that law. And Mr. Slaven told me that, Mr. Requena told me that, and I said, I don't understand that, I know there's a law that exists. That people cannot go in and and cut X amount of trees from a particular lot or a development or anything. Without going through a required process, uh, where you go before the appropriate boards and 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 all of that. And uh, and 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 uh, and and get that kind of uh permission to proceed. And so um. I I I was baffled, I was uh disappointed, the next day with all that heavy equipment, they had that whole place cut down. And and finished, and then after that, more trucks and more equipment came in to cut up the logs and truck all that debris out of there. And now we were left with five acres of barren uh uh destroyed forest. Which was pristine forest, it had a, it had a tree in there with an osprey nest, it's it's it is, it is uh. It is on one side of it is is Audubon la- uh land that's being preserved uh uh on behalf of the town. And we're very lucky to have them invest in our town for that purpose, on the other side, also bordering this property. Is Buzz's Bay Coalition has dedicated a bunch of land to um and that they've purchased. That uh uh for for the same reason, to preserve all this uh, the beauty that exists in at Burgess Point. So close to Oxford Bay, so close to the Cape Cod Canal, in concert with the Audubon and all of that. And and it was a shocking thing to see, and I know that those of you who got our package can see those aerial photos. Those aerial photos do show the Audubon land north of uh uh Burgess Point Road. And uh, on the right hand side, uh, the forest land owned by Buzz's Bay Coalition. And suddenly now, we have right between those two beautiful areas, this decimated. Uh, a piece of land that is nothing now but but sand and and wild uh wild growth. Basis species are growing in there, nothing, and so anyway, one thing led to another. Eventually, uh, Mr. Clemmie had to re- wanted to remove the the stumps. And uh, and at that point, the town told him, well, we now realize that you have uh cut this. Uh, despite the fact that we have laws that required a hearing and a process that allowed the neighbor. And the abuddies to come in and and offer comment and uh and be so informed, and so um. So uh, you know, that's, we were, we were left hanging at that place in time because the trees were already cut. So the planning board, I believe it was, uh, indicated to Mr. Clemmie that you've got to go through a process. And you've got to file for a permit and to remove the trunk, the the stumps, and also you have to uh. Uh, include in there, uh, even though retroactively, the cutting of the trees, because that's a violation of the law. And as I said, it's an environmental crime, in my opinion, considering the beauty of that land and and. And the effect of that land on the neighborhood, on the environment, and uh and the town of Wareham. And setting a precedent like that would be dangerous for the community because now anybody could go in and clear cut some land. And come in retroactively and expect the town to 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 give them the relief that they might be looking for. So um, so with that as a background, um, uh, then many meetings took place. During this six year period. Uh, there was a meeting with the with the conservation committee to, uh, Mr. Clemmie did have a a a hearing with. Conservation Committee to delineate the wetlands, so that when they did the clear cut, they didn't, they didn't encroach on the wetlands. And um, and 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 they put in the hay bales and all of that. Um, and so all the cutting is 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 beyond that, but I asked the question at that hearing. What are his intentions? Why is he cutting down all these trees? What is the uh development that, uh, if that's what he's looking for, or what is the purpose? Of 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 that, is he gonna put a pasture in, a farm, as someone indicated? Uh, horses, uh, or whatever he had in mind, who knows? And uh, there was no answer to that question at that time and and uh. Uh, uh, and the and the conservation committee said, we're only here to delineate the wetlands. When he goes, when he gets to the point where he's gonna cut trees down, he has to go through a process with the planning board. And the planning board will then develop a order of conditions that will determine precisely how he proceeds. And he has to proceed based on that, and so um. So uh, none of that happened and and um and to this day. Uh, he uh since, uh, and so they did approve, so the planning board and Mr. Buckland. Studied the situation, visited the situation, and eventually, after a period of time, came up with an order of conditions. That would uh try to, to the best extent possible. Um, um, kinda, kinda fix up the 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 situation. And the and the uh and 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 the chaos that was created and and the and the mess that was created on this lot. And so they came up with an order of conditions, those order of conditions were nine of them, as I recall. Clearly indicated to Mr. Clemmie what was required by the town of Wareham. Uh, uh, in in restoration, in the restoration of that property. And they asked him what his intentions were there, he gave a couple of options that he was considering. He said he'd be back, you know, within a reasonable period of time to tell them what that. What that uh final determination would be, or so what he was gonna do with that property. That was maybe two years ago, and he has not responded to that as of yet that I'm aware of. So the thing's been in limbo, the place is a mess, uh, he is now not, he has removed the stumps. He's not according to the uh uh to the regulations, he's not. Indicated to the town, uh, where those stumps went, how they were disposed of, the town made that a condition. They realize that, the town realizes that there are laws governing the the uh the destruction or the. Getting rid of that kind of waste stump materials, and I think they wanted to be sure that the town was allowing to do something that was within. Within the law and and done in the appropriate way, so. Uh, he's never, he's never answered that, that's just one of the conditions, but the other speakers are gonna address all these things. What we, what we did not realize was, and and after the, after all these hearings. And we're gonna provide you with evidence, and evidence that we believe would stand up to any uh legal challenge. That uh that he has not come even close to um. To uh, living up to those, to the planning board's standards. And that he's only complied with one or two of the of the nine uh orders of conditions. And that he's ignored all the rest of them, and so, and we've got the support of Mr. Buckland on that. Uh, you 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 will see evidence to that, you will see evidence uh. Uh, to that and 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 many other things, uh, including the planning board refusing to uh. To accept the project uh as as uh, as in, as being in compliance. But the thing that surprised us all and the thing you're gonna have to wrestle with tonight is the fact that we were told. A big surprise to us, and I think this is a weak spot of the town of Wareham that needs to be addressed, and that is that. Only Mr. Requena can determine compliance, that the planning board who, and Mr. Buckland, who. Who worked out, uh, who who studied the matter, who investigated the matter, who determined the um. The orders of conditions. Uh. Had no voice in determining whether those conditions were in compliance. Uh, at one point, Mr. Mr. Clemmie, uh, Mr. Uh, Requena told the board, the planning board, that he would. He would, he would uh do that in accordance with their wishes, which he has ignored and 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 not followed through on. And you will see that as clear evidence, as shown by the record. Nora Bickie, who's gonna speak next, has listened to every, read all the minutes of every meeting over this period of time. Uh, she has watched every single video, she has written down every. Comment, uh, every relevant comment made by anybody on this thing, and she will not tell you anything that we can't back up. With with evidence, clear evidence, and so we feel that this is a no brainer. But the question is, why is Mr. Requena, uh, the only person that can determine compliance here, why isn't the board? Who instigated the 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 regular, the uh, the orders? Why don't they have a a final say? And why is it left to just one man who wrote a letter saying that they were not in compliance? And then maybe uh several months later, uh, uh, determined that they were in compliance, even though it changed in the intro. So that's the background uh I'm giving you. Uh, I I our environment down in Burgess Point has been changed. Uh, forever, it's never gonna, it's never gonna come back to where it was at one time before this clear cut took place. And there's a lot of mitigating circumstances, and this is a big. Untold story in the town of Wareham, because the, what has happened here has set a precedent. That anybody else can follow, how are you gonna tell anybody else they can't clear cut a bunch of property? When you've allowed, if you, if you allow this man to be in compliance with a with a clear violation of town bylaws. Uh, and and so now, we come to the zoning board, who's never heard, I don't know how much of this you possibly have followed. But this is the first time, now we have to start all over again, we're talking to the zoning board now, we're not talking to anybody else that we could talk to the last six years. And so you're our only hope for reason and for and for an open mind and and for determining what's best. For the town of Wareham, not only specifically to this issue as it exists today, but going forward. And what the future path is gonna be in Wareham when it comes to overseeing uh situations like this. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a big factor, it's gonna get a lot of play in in the press, uh, I believe, after this meeting here. And uh, and I think people are gonna look at it, particularly now that there's so much awareness in town. Of people clearing land and cutting trees and and all of that, we've got a beautiful town, that's a beautiful area, the concept, the uh. The uh, the um, um, the Audubon Society and Buzz's Bay Coalition invested heavily in the town of Wareham. For our benefit, and here right in the middle of what they're doing, uh, we have this disaster which has occurred, so. With that, I will uh, I will, I would yield to to Nora Bickie and to the other neighbors, all of who. Have uh various opinions that they'd like to offer.
All right, uh, just to clarify something, uh, the commissioner is the only one. Has the power to enforce, uh, like any conditions and stuff, it's not like the town of Wareham, this is statewide law. He's the only one who is uh has the authority to write such a letter or to overturn or approve or not approve. He's pretty much our eyes on the ground, and then it's, and if somebody in like this matter. Disagree, you'll appeal it to the board, but that's how state law works everywhere, this is, the Wareham is not special. Let me, I feel bad that this whole clearance idea, you're right, over fifty thousand square feet, you need permitting. But let me, I just need something, just to clear something up, so you, you asking the board. E- exactly to uh say that mi- that. To ask Mr. Requena or overturn his decision, so Mr. Requena saying, yes, he's in compliance, you want us to. Uh, to overturn, say, to to say he's not in compliance, that's what you asked, right? Ma'am, one second, Mr. Deekus?
Well, this is an appeal process, an appeal process to me means that we have a right to appeal his original decision. And that means to me at least, that you have a right to weigh in on this, I would also add. That we have looked through the bylaws of the town of Wareham, and the town administrator, who Mr. Requena answers to. Also has the right to step in and 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 declare compliance and no compliance. The, as we understand it, and this will be maybe discussed uh by by.
I would, I would let Mrs. Nora speak, but I get, Mr. Deekus, the only person can overturn. Uh, the commissioner decision is only the zoning board, not the administrator, not the governor, it's only us. Or a Supreme Court judge, that's the only one. So it goes through us, then it goes to a judge after, but let's hear it from Mrs. Nora and we go from there, this is Nora.
Yes, thank you, uh, for you to the board, um, because some members didn't get. I'm not sure if they actually have what we are appealing, which is the October eighteenth letter from. The building commissioner enforcement officer. Um, so I'm hoping that they will be able to get that information, so that is what we are appealing, is the. Um, Mr. Deekus and Mr. Enos, Mr. Balzerini, Mr. Charlton, and Mr. Fuller. Specifically requested on October eighth that Mr. Requena enforce the orders specifically. And so he responded on the October eighteenth with this um document. Where he declined to enforce the orders. So that's what we're appealing because he said at the end of that document that we could appeal the order, so that's exactly what we're appealing. Is our, his request to, uh, our request for him to uh enforce the order. Because we believe that they have never been enforced.
Okay, if I, if I, if I may interrupt Mrs. Nora.
Sure.
I I I read that the orders with the planning board assess to plant brass, put a hay bale, all these things. That the only drink, the only thing I could come to think of. Were there like some kinda spec sheets or details, I like, I needed proof of an error. That the commission, the commissioner committed, in other word, that the that the planning board said, okay, I want you to use. Quote Home Depot seeds, not uh, not low seed, and I wanted to use sixteen pounds, not fifteen pound, with their specs. Or was it the planning board said, okay, just grass the area, so it's gonna be a little specific. What the planning board imposed of conditions, uh, so that Mr. Requena, if there's a spec sheet that that there's details. And so that Mr. Requena can follow, eh eh, I I, you know, do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, go and planting a field, just to plant the field, if Mr. Requena went in there, I saw in his pictures, there's grass there. Now the question becomes, is this is the grass the planning board re- requested, this is the point.
Right, well, and no, according to Mr. Buckland, it was not, and according to um, the zoning bylaws. Four inches of soil, of topsoil was never placed, so um, I I I will read what I have prepared, which will go.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay, so th- those were this, the orders of the uh planning board. Okay, so the special permit reads specifically that this was a post-action approval for the clearing of the trees. Which was the article twelve violation, so. Um, we, and we did give you the those photographs, and I know some of the members don't have them tonight, but we we would ask that they would look at those. So the special permit was issued on January fourteenth, twenty nineteen. And since that time, members of the planning board through Mr. Buckland have requested that Windship L F C, which is the Clemmies. To comply with the conditions of the permit. Through records requests, Mr. Deekus has obtained evidence of letters and emails detailing multiple requests. By Mr. Buckland to the Clemmies, asking them to um comply. So on December twenty first, twenty twenty, Mr. Requena submitted a compliance report. Which is in the information that we sent to you. And basically, he admitted that. Those um, there were not in compliance, and I will, I will just quickly review those for you.
Okay.
The first condition is significant in that the site visits for the planning board or its rep- representative. Shall be called for by the applicant when ready to begin work, when grading is finished. Before any repair of the traveled ways. Upon completion of stump removal and regrading, the applicant shall call for a site visit by the planning board or its representative. So Mr. Deekus requested documentation of these calls or these requests of the site visits or the actual visits themselves. Obviously, he received none of that because the planning board members and Mr. Buckland have stated many times that the work. Except for the stump removal, of course, was not done. In that compliance report, Mr. Requena uh stated no specific findings, and that's because they were not done. In the second condition, which allows for the stump removals, and that was done on July twenty fifth. In the second condition, which allows for the stump removals, and that was done on July twenty fifth of twenty nineteen. Of course, those were removed, so he was in compliance. That's basically. The only um, uh, order of conditions that was in compliance. However, the third condition required that the applicant had to use an approved disposal facility. Approval was never uh, obtained from the uh, planning board for that. And while the uh, stumps were being, while they were in transit, being disposed of. Uh, Mr. Buckland and Mr. Clemmie were exchanging emails. There was confusion over where they were being brought. So again, there was no, um, there, as order number one says. Uh, the applicant shall call for a site visit. They have to be uh, notified of where they'll be uh, sent. Mr. Raquina himself was said he was unable to speak to that condition. So Mr. Ra, Mr. Deekes received several documents when he did a document request. And um, most of those documents basically refer to. Number four and number five of special conditions. And that they were not in compliance. Now, those are the most important ones. And I think those are the ones mostly, um, Mr. Chair, that you were referring to, that can be measured. Um, that's specific to the zoning bylaw. Uh, Article twelve eighteen point fifteen. Concerning revegetation techniques, application of topsoil and grading. Uh, these are the conditions that are most serious. Uh, they're most damaging to the property, and they are most concerning to the neighbors and the abouters. So in a memo to the planning board, Mr. Buckland summarized his contacts with the applicants. On July first, twenty twenty, Mr. Buckland sent a text. And said, the site does not have ground cover as required by condition number five. On July twenty seventh, he sent a follow-up message stating, quote. As a representative of the planning board, I am asking you to regrade as needed to match the proposed grades. Within six inches of those grades. To reseed and water or hydroseed and water to obtain, uh, to obtain a complete ground cover within this growing season. On September twenty, on September second, twenty twenty. Almost two years after the special permit was issued. Mr. Buckland sent a message asking the applicants to, quote, grade. Put down a lo, a layer of topsoil and hydroseed. Mr. Clemmie responded on September second, the same day. Stating he would, quote, address this as soon as possible. Now, Mr. Buckland also said that, uh, Mr. Clemmie suggested at that time. That the grading was not allowed by the special permit conditions. In fact, they were required. Um, on September twenty fourth. At the uh, twenty eighteen planning board meeting, as Mr. Deekes had men- mentioned. This was the meeting where they decided, where they discussed what might be going on that property. Mr. Clemmie said he was going to, quote, leave the grade the way it is. Even though he was required to grade within those, that six inch requirement that the zoning board requires. So on October first, twenty twenty, Mr. Buckland sent another email to the Clemmies. Asking for, again, completion of the ground hu- uh, cover this growing season. Now, on October seventh, twenty twenty, Mr. Buckland met with Bill Clemmie and Carl Clemmie. To discuss the previous email regarding restoration of the property. Quote, Bill offered to put a fast-growing, late-season seed mix on the bare spots. This is a temporary measure as the original order still stands, end quote. That was Mr. Buckland again. Uh, Mr. Clemmie was notified on October thirteenth that, quote, the seeding he offered was not sufficient, end quote. So consequently, orders four and five have not been met. Now, in Mr. Raquina's original compliance report, he stated, and I quote. If the planning board is satisfied with the information provided, I would consider the project to be in compliance with number four. Obviously, Mr. Buckland has been working with the planning board. All of those miss, uh, messages back and forth, they were not satisfied. And as to number five, Mr. Raquina stated in his compliance report, quote. I do not consider this item to be in compliance. And I recommend that further seeding be required at the beginning of the spring growing season. Now, order number six regards the repair and maintenance of the existing sediment and erosion control. Now, it should be noted, those controls are supposed to remain in place until all conditions are met. Now, considering that um, uh, the planning board, Mr. Buckland, the neighbors and so forth, provided evidence that those controls have. Uh, uh, that those conditions have not been met. Those, those controls should be in good repair and they should be maintained. That's a conservation issue. Now, Mr. uh, Raquina, in his first compliance report, said, um. Quote, they are lacking the required maintenance, and they should be touched up and maintained where needed until proper ground cover is achieved. Order number seven, both the town administrator and Mr. Buckland visited the site with Mr. Deekes. And agreed that the disturbance and the disturbance and damage to the road and the travel ways were not repaired. Immediately as required after the removal of the stumps. That's in the special order. In a letter to Mr. Clemmie dated December sixteenth, twenty nineteen, now remember, the stumps were removed in July. This is December, so it's not immediate. Um, where the stump was removed at the, uh, Mr. Buckland said. There's a, a spot along Burgess Point Road where the stump was removed at the edge and into the road. And sand was used to fill the void. As expected, the well-sorted sand did not provide a good travel surface and is leaving a pothole. Proper patch material should be used to replace the sand. I suggest you consider reclaimed asphalt as the replacement material, very specific. This is in accordance with condition seven of the special permit. That's Mr. Buckland's words. This was never done. And Mr. uh, Raquina, in his compliance report, had stated. Quote, the matter should be discussed by the board to determine if the applicant has met their requirements in a satisfactory manner. And obviously, according to Mr. Buckland, they were not. So on October nineteenth, twenty twenty, Mr. Buckland informed the planning board. That the requirements of the special permit had not been met. And because winter was approaching, it was too late to do work on the property. The planning board modified the permit and extended the deadline to May fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Now, the minutes to this meeting uh, state that the members were very frustrated, the order of conditions had not been met. Um, but they did vote for the extension. At that time, Mr. Buckland stated, quote, if the planning board says that's what the conditions are. Then that's what the building commissioner should be enforcing, end quote. No ambiguity in that statement. Uh, so the planning, planning board fully expected that the enforcement officer would expect, enforce those conditions. As he said that he did. Now, on this, at the same meeting, Mr. King, a member of the planning board, said, May fifteenth. If nothing is done, penalties begin to accrue. Uh, the chairman of the board, George Barrett, we all know the most, he said, the motion then. All work named in the special permit has to be done by May fifteenth. So a letter was sent to Bill Clemmie from Mr. Buckland on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty, stating that the deadline was extended to, quote. Have completed the property restoration specified by the special permit. The board asked for a fine graded lot with four inches of topsoil placed on the graded surfaces and seeded with grass. These are to be at least germinated by that date. These are conditions four and five. So at the May tenth, twenty twenty one meeting of the planning board, this is just five days before the. Extension would expire. The members asked for a report on the compliance from Mr. Raquina. Who said he had filed uh, the report previously in December, and that he had nothing further to report. That's not surprising because no activity took place from October when the deadline was extended to May fifteenth. Nothing was done on the property. So during the January eleventh, twenty twenty planning board meeting. Mr. Buckland had stated that enforcement could not take place until a deadline passed, so that was May. The planning board requested enforcement multiple times. Mr. Raquina took no action despite one of his comments to Mr. Clemmie during a planning board meeting. This was December fourteenth. Mr. Raquina said, Bill. Mr. Clemmie, if they, the planning board members. Still decide that these conditions have not been met, and they request enforcement. Then that's the action I have to take. On September twelfth and October sixth, Mr. De, of twenty twenty one. Mr. Deekes and his neighbors made the request to the planning board to enforce those conditions because. They had still not been met. Mr. Swenson, the chair of the planning board, informed Mr. Deekes that they could do nothing more. Mr. Raquina then informed Mr. Deekes that that request had to go to him directly. So on October eighth, using the Mass, uh, the Mass General Law, chapter forty eighth. Forty A, section seven. Mr. Deekes then made the formal request to Mr. Raquina, asking for, the same request, but sent it to Mr. Raquina. Asking for enforcement of the order of conditions. So um, that, that's the order that, of course, is being repealed, I mean, appealed, but. We, we would like to say that section fourteen sixty one of your zoning bylaws. Um, are, are very clear that the conditions of the special permit protects all adverse effects on the neighborhood. And the open area created by clearcutting. And that those conditions, if they are enforced, will not aver- adversely affect the neighborhood. As at least temporarily an open area. It's been open since twenty sixteen. And that it, that it is an appropriate use of the land, at least temporarily as an open area. So here we are. Despite Mr. Raquina's conclusion in his previous compliance report. Mr. Buckland's conclusions, the town administrator when he visited. All of the members of the planning board, most of them who have visited the site. And of course, the neighbors and Mr. Deekes, all determining that the order of conditions have not been met. Mr. Deekes returned the request with this. Letter and many um, photographs that he took from inside his car. You can see the photographs that he took. In the package that we gave you. Um, that, um, so he declined to enforce them. And so here we are today, um, appealing them because he said at the, in that document that. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty eight, section fifteen, you may. Appeal this decision to the zoning board. And so here we are, and you are our last.
Thank you, Ms. Nora. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Raquina to clarify thing. But is it clear? Is it clear that the planning board, that the planning board clearly said the conditions has not been met? Is that a final letter from them saying? That every conditions we put, we haven't been met, or that they say, eh, eh, he did it?
So.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Buckland, oh.
One second, please.
Did, were you asking me?
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Nora.
Yeah, uh, what I, I, I quoted Mr. Buckland, who was. Who sent those letters to uh, Mr. Clemmie at the request of the planning board.
Right.
Well, you know, through all of the um, meetings that we watched. Uh, it was all, you know, the planning board. Reported that they, the conditions had not been met. Mr. Buckland made many visits out to the site. Many of the members made visits out to the site through two whole planning board, uh, you know. Many members have come in, or not many, several members have come and gone. Um, some of them uh, are off the board now, but um, many of them have visited the site. So, yeah, I mean, it's, you know.
I would like to hear it from Commissioner Raquina before we jump into conclusions, if they.
Other members.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Other members would like to speak who um, signed this uh.
Right, absolutely. Everybody will have a chance, but let's get some clarification, then we go back to the board member and everybody, if you don't mind. Commissioner Raquina, can we just? Commissioner, are you there?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, can you, so brief us as fast, as much as you can?
Absolutely. I like to speak to the, to the entire panel through you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify a couple items here. The timeline that Mr. Deekes laid out is, 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 is a little off. But just, just to give you a brief overview, it wasn't the planning board that told Mr. Clemmie. That he had to get the permit. There was a call that came into my office. Um, regarding the cutting of the trees without a permit. There was a visit made. There was a short investigation. And there was, there was a letter issued to Mr. Clemmie. There was a notice of violation that came from my office. Informing Mr. Clemmie that he, that he was in violation, that he needed to correct that violation. The only method of correcting that violation, according to our zoning bylaw, is through a special permit from the planning board. Because the work had already been done, it was already completed. Any approvals issued by the planning board were considered retroactive. It was an approval after the fact, all right? All the damage had already been done. So there were emails that went back and forth between. Mr. Buckland, there were emails that went back and forth between a few people after the approval. Whatever that may be, those are not enforceable conditions of a special permit decision. Okay, I can't enforce hearsay. I can't enforce. What people discuss after the fact. I can only enforce the letter of the decision. So, yes, when I issued my first letter, it wasn't a request for enforcement, Mr. Deekes. It was, it was a request to go out and review the property. At the request of the planning board. I went out. I saw the property, I looked at it, and I wrote a letter in response as they had requested of. The, the request I received from Mr. Deekes was a request for legal enforcement. There's a big difference. When, when I go through the list of the items in that decision as they're written. By the letter, because that's all I can enforce. He, I have to consider, if you read, if you read the decision. And you look at the conditions onsite, I have no choice but to say that Mr. Clemmie is in substantial completion. There are some hearsay items in that, in, in that, in that request. I know Mr. Deekes said that he fixed the road. Mr. Clemmie said that he fixed the road. They go back and forth. They have both claimed to be responsible for the repair of that road. I can't verify. I have no way of verifying that, and I can't bring that to court, okay? There, there, the emails about regrading, hydroseeding. Installing a well, that that's come up. I don't know how many times. All those items have all come up. They're not in the, in, in the, the actual decision. There, there were, there were items that were brought up after the fact, but they were never written into the decision. The items that are in Article twelve of the zoning bylaw. Are what the planning board has the ability to impose in that decision. They were never brought into that decision. Therefore, it is my opinion, and it is my, i- is my position that they are not enforcing.
All right, let me, let me ask question, Ms. Nora or Mr. Deekes. Is it possible to go back to the planning board and give a certificate, get a certificate of compliance of the special permit? Is Mr. Buckland here? Miss, can, is Ken here, Aaron?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Ken. Ken, is it possible to get a, uh? I mean, when, when you issue a special permit, whether zoning or planning, you could get a certificate of compliance. Is that a way we could go to the planning board and ask them for a certificate of compliance or not? So if they give, go ahead.
There, there is no certificate of compliance, uh, uh, unlike the wetlands, uh, plants, uh. Uh, permits that are issued. Uh, with the certificate of compliance. There is no certificate of compliance with a special permit. It's essentially, typically what happens is it ends with a um. Uh, certificate of occupancy from the building permit that's issued as a result of the. Of the special permit for construction of some uh, building.
Uh, I, I beg to differ because when, when the planning board issues, let's say, a Form C. Plan, a subdivision plan, they say, okay, plant this tree, put a sidewalk. Uh, pave this, uh, uh, gra- uh pave this, uh grass this, and I've done it, and they go there at the end and look at it and sign off on it. So why can't they go and sign off on that project? Just like approving a Form C.
They they because it's not in the conditions of the approval. Uh typically, in they in their standard conditions, they would put something about a final inspection. Uh and they do include in um special permits that they issue, uh the inspection schedule, including a final inspection for the development. But that's typically for a release of a bond or um a release of a covenant for the purpose of of that action.
I I understand, but in this matter, I would like, they're the one who issued the permit. We would like to hear from them if it's in compliance or not. So that they're the main person to ask. So is it possible to go, there's no such thing, they can't go at least. I mean, if they impose grading, they could go there and see it, maybe send Charlie there and look at it. Did he grade within six inches? Did he put the four inch shloom? Did he plant this kind of seeds? All these things that Mrs. Nora mentioned. I mean, it's it's not rocket science. If they send Charlie and he reads those uh those conditions and see if it may met or not, at least we have something. But if they don't give us something, we 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 can't work on it. I mean, I want to start asking the board members uh one by one, see what they think. Maybe they get an idea what's going on. Richard, you got an idea what's happening? You have any comment? Yes, sir. I'll get to you. One second, Mr. Bill.
I'm a little overwhelmed the fact that uh this gentleman just seems to be having out this land and making enemies with neighbors and everything else, so. I I don't understand why he he's still continuing. I mean, it's it's what, six years down the road? That I thought that seems to me that there should have been something done four or five years before we got to this point. So I'm I'm kind of confused to the fact that why are we here now when there's so many things put in place and conditions put in place that we're here? So I'm 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 kind of confused, but at the same time, I understand where we're going.
Okay, Troy, do you have a comment on that?
I I I kind of agree with Richard. It it I don't understand why we're, why this is still going on. Um it it just seems absurd to me.
Okay. Veronica, yes, yes, sir. I'll get to you. One second. Veronica.
Um I I have a few comments. Um I agree with what's been said by the board, but um I have some comments to make um about each condition, but also a general comment um in terms of Mr. Raquina's assessment of these conditions um that he feels unable to enforce them because they're not I I would say, I guess, specific enough, so they're not saying uh this needs to be done and that needs to be done. It's not very clear. Um but it's my thought that because it's not clear, that his opinion can be used to determine if these things have been completed. So I think that's the first thing. But then the other thing, I think um each condition, though, some of them I think are a little more clear, like um was there a visit, condition one, was there a visit or not? That's not an opinion. Either somebody went there and it was done as it was written, that it should be done, or they didn't. The disposal of the stumps, condition three. Where were they disposed of? If this was not done, it's not compliant. It's pretty clear. Um condition five um regarding the hydro seeding. Again, I think because it isn't very specific, uh Mr. Raquina could could require more compliance. Um condition six, um the sediment control. I think the removal of the 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 um the hay bales or what was put in place for the year in order to maintain that um stabilization of the soils, I think that that is at a minimum, there's more language there that says that it needs to be determined if there's continuing erosion. Additional controls may be requested. So that's pretty clear. Um I would say the regarding the road and the travel ways, because it's going back and forth. I would say clearly that the applicant is the one who needs to prove whether that road was road was was repaired or not. And I think that he should be contacting the town to show when he has finished that repair, and it shouldn't be um he said, she said, he should be held to make to prove that he repaired it. Um but finally, I would like to say that the clear cutting, only having to put some hydro seeding, to me, you got off quite easily. If I had been on the board, I would have said that tree planting should have been done. That's what happens in a lot of towns when things like this occur, because when you go in and remove all those trees, how do you get them back? Grass isn't going to return those trees. You have to replant trees. But um I don't want to get off in that, but that that's my assessment of this um this appeal.
Thank you, sir. I'll I'll go to you. Just let me hear from one board member and I'll get to you. Jim?
Um I guess I could talk almost as long as Mr. Deekus without as much training as him. But um I'm in speaking in general, I'll I'll try to narrow down to specifics on what's in front of us, but speaking in general. In general, I don't understand why this was a matter in front of the planning board and wasn't handled by conservation from the get go. Um speaking in general, I don't understand why of everything I've seen and I I read, I reviewed the materials that were presented in advance. Um we're kind of getting sucked into the vortex here, and I don't I don't wish to be sucked in. Um but I don't understand why there isn't a drawn plan. There is no plan that I can look at. Um I don't know if, I don't know, for instance, I don't know if in fact 50,000 square feet of land were cut, because I can't look at a map, a draw, an engineered plan of Mr. Clemmie's property. And what was cut, what wasn't cut, what are the dimensions, how many square feet were it? I see some, I see some aerial photographs, but they have no, I mean, yeah, there's a boat trailer. Is it a boat trailer for a 60-foot boat or a 16-foot boat, or is it for a dinghy? So I have no no measure of scale, and and I don't want to make subjective decisions. I don't know why I don't have a plan in front of me that shows me 217,000 square feet. Because five acres is what's been alluded to. 50,000 square feet is the um I guess the gold standard on where you have to apply for permits, but I haven't seen a a single shred of evidence that 50,000 square feet of trees were cut. So maybe they were, maybe they weren't. But all I'm telling you is what's in front of me, what's been presented pre before tonight and during tonight. I haven't seen one shred of evidence that 50,000 square feet or more were cut. I see some pictures of some open land, don't know where the open land is. I could go to Arizona and take some pictures and throw them in. I just don't I don't know what's being put in front of me, and I don't know why it's being put in front of me. I don't know what I'm being asked to decide. I'd like for some of these people to tell me what they expect this board to do. I I it seems to me like they've come to us and said, tell Mr. Raquina to do it. We'll do what? And I guess, so I I think we need to focus, we're zoning, we're not conservation, we're not planning. We're not the reactionary board. We're not the we're not um the do just, we're zoning. So we we should be dealing with a zoning issue. And the zoning issue is regarding 50,000 square feet of trees being cut. I'd like to see a drawn plan by an engineer that says the area that was cut. I've seen plans drawn before that shows every single tree on a parcel. All I see is some photographs that there. It's very hard for me to make specific decisions on non-specific information. That's I I I could go on and on and on. Like I said, but Mr. Deekus went to school and learned how to talk. I didn't. But I I I there's so much I could say. I I think it's easier to just, let's let's move on. Let's let's get past this thing. Let's see where we are.
All right. Yes, sir. I want to go. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Okay, um you hear me all right? Yeah.
I need you to.
I'm not iPad eight. I'm Peter Belzerini. I'm one of the abutters. Excuse me.
I name it, name an address, please.
Uh Peter Belzerini, uh 3 Burgess Point Road, Waring. And also an abutto to this piece of property by uh ownership of another parcel. Uh I just, you know, I want to summarize a little bit. I want to be probably a briefer than, you know, before, try to put it in in simple terms rather than uh, you know, using all the dates and all the different uh uh, you know, documents that have been issued and so forth and so on. Uh just before I start, I will, Mr. Kabuchi, I can assure you that more than 50,000 square feet of trees were cut, that the the parcel that's in question is uh it's located on the assessors' map and
Can I interrupt, yeah, through the board? Can I interrupt them?
All right, yeah, I mean, but that's.
That's my my point specifically, yeah.
I, okay, let's not point fingers.
Let me just, I have a little brief statement I'd like to just read them, you know, then I'll get out of your way. I'm here this evening to offer my observations relative to the ongoing controversy surrounding the illegal cutting of approximately five acres of wooded land located at 20 Winship Ave. In direct violation of Article 12 of the Town of Wareham zoning bylaws. The parcel was clear cut without any appropriate hearings or permits needed to do so within the bounds of our laws and regulations. It's beyond dispute that the owners, Winship LLC, cut the trees in violation of our town bylaw. Now, why are we here tonight? Reasons are quite simple. The owners of the property were brought before the planning board to be held accountable for their violation. At no time has Winship LLC ever presented a plan or even begun to explain what the reason for the clear cutting of a pristine uh woodland was. A detailed, now this is very relevant to what has been said by uh the enforcement officer. A detailed order of conditions was issued to El to Winship LLC to correct the violation through a series of demands on improving the mess that had been created. This list of conditions has not been met. In fact, it's been totally ignored by Winship LLC over the past six years. The planning board, without direct enforcement powers, has been stymied in attempting to enforce their orders. And our enforcement officer and building inspector has refused to enforce any of the orders of the conditions that were put onto Winship LLC. So we have it in a nutshell. Number one, a clear violation of established uh of a of an established bylaw occurred. Number two, the violators are brought before the appropriate town board to be held accountable. Number three, the board in question, planning, issues its order of conditions with a set time limit to complete the work that's been ordered to rectify, at least in part, what the violation was. Number four, the violators, in this case, Winship LLC, completely ignore the orders. With the one exception of actually taking the stumps out. That's the only thing of the orders that was ever done. Number five, the planning board seeks enforcement of the remaining orders from the town enforcement officer. Number six, the enforcement officer refuses to enforce the planning board's orders. Number seven, this refusal results in the current appeal by the residents of the neighborhood who've been forced to live with the results of this illegal clear cutting and the damage it's caused to us. Just a little side note, I just want to mention, a few years ago, three years ago, we had a very violent winter storm. And it knocked out the power in the town, all throughout the town. But because of the few trees that were left along Burgess Point Road and the other five acres completely uh destroyed, gone. A torrent of wind came off Onset Bay, knocked the trees down and knocked not only the wires down, but pulled the poles and everything that were there. And we, the residents of Burgess Point, were out of electricity during that storm for eight days. The longest of anybody in the town. It was a direct result of the clear cutting that had occurred back three years earlier. Let me continue. As a layman, there are.
Uh one second, let him finish. Go ahead, sorry, keep going.
Uh as a layman, there are things about the explanations given by the enforcement office, uh enforcement officer as to why he refuses to enforce the orders that baffle me and actually, to me, defy logic. For example, under order number three, the stumps left behind by clear cutting were to be removed, and the destination of the removed stumps was to be reported to the planning board. Seems pretty simple to me. After the stumps were taken out, taken out, where'd they go? Winship LLC paid someone to remove the stumps. Why can't the enforcement officer demand records from Winship LLC to ensure that they were properly disposed of? I mean, and uh just one more, under condition number five, Winship LLC was ordered to grade and seed the open field that was created by either spreading grass seed or hydro seeding and then watering and fertilizing. What possible dispute is there here? It's either been done or it hasn't been done. There's no gray area. The main requirement was never done. It was ordered but never done. Anyone driving by the the field that was created in the past three years can clearly see that the only growth on the land was an assortment of weeds that have taken hold. Yet our enforcement officer claims, and I quote one of his uh in his response to Mr. Deekus, there was substantial vegetative growth from ground level. So he drives by, he determines that Winship is somehow in compliance. How can that be? They never seeded, watered, fertilized, as they were ordered to do. They let the sand field go to weeds, and the enforcement officer somehow equates just letting weeds grow as completion of a very specific order by the planning board. It's clear from the aerial photographs provided and other parts of the presentation that no seeding was ever done on the majority of the five acres. And if any seeding was done, it was not done to the specifications of the orders of condition. I could go on about all the refusals refusals to enforce. But what is abundantly clear is that very serious violations occurred. And the mechanisms within our town government that are supposed to protect the town and its citizens to enforce the town bylaws and to hold violators in the town have been ignored at all levels. Our concerns have been brought before planning, conservation, town administrator, the board of selectmen, enforcement officer, and now we appeal to you, the ZBA. And this situation has been allowed to fester. In fact, it's gotten worse. I ask everyone here. If the Town of Wareham is not going to enforce the rules and the regulations and bylaws of the town fairly and regardless of who violate, who the violators are or whether or not they're going to threaten to bring the town to court when the bylaws are enforced. We may as well eliminate the bylaws altogether and disband the boards and committees charged with their enforcement. Without enforcement, our bylaws our bylaws only exist on paper. And all and all those of ill will, knowing there's no accountability for violating the rules, will continue to flaunt them. With all this said, we circle right back to the very beginning. The reason we're here is because the land was clear was clear cut illegally. And the town has either been unable or refused to hold the offending bounty party accountable. We ask the ZBA and the enforcement powers in the town to use what powers we have to correct the situation that never should have happened in the first place.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Bill Clemmie.
Yes, um.
I just speak on the facts, don't point fingers, please. I don't say.
No, unlike others, uh Mr. Chairman, I will not do that. I don't I don't have a prepared statement. I don't have a speech. I don't have data that was given to the board. Unfortunately, the board does not have all of the data that is available to review this issue in that they don't have the order of conditions, they don't have Mr. Raquina's, they don't want to focus on Mr. Raquina's responses to Mr. Deekus. The bottom line is this. There's no conservation issue to be discussed here, and Mr. and Mr. Puchat himself will agree to that. The conservation issue, we went for permit, we got permit, we got approved, we did the work. The the sediment was required. The Mr. Over the last two years or three years, we have worked with Mr. Buckland for many, for for probably two of the last three years, and then Mr. Buckland's determined that this was an enforcement issue, and Mr. Buckland. that this was an enforcement issue and Mr. Buckland turned the, turn the issue over to Mr. Aquina as the enforcement officer for the town of Wareham. We then worked with Mr. Aquina over the last year or so to address the orders of conditions and what opened orders of conditions needed to be resolved. And over the last two years, we have done that. Now, I, I'm sorry that Mr. Deekus and Mr. Balzerini and them do not have privy to every conversation that I may have had with Mr. Buckland or Mr. um, Aquina. But at the end of the day, they are those people that are responsible to report to the planning board and we report the enforcement. So I'm not gonna go through the orders because I've been through them with the enforcement officer as designated by the town of Wareham, Mr. Aquina. We've met the requirements as required by Mr. Aquina. We've met the requirements as quiet, as acquired by Ken Buck, Ken Buckland as the town administrator for the planning board. We presented all of the data that was requested. Anything that we were asked to do by Mr. Aquina or Mr. Buckland, we did. In regards to specifics, I'm not gonna get into specifics in any particular order. All I can tell you is that we worked through any and all issues with Mr. Aquina and Mr. Buckland. And it took us three or four attempts to get things correct. There were a couple of issues that we had to redo. Everybody, for those that don't remember, there was a drought in two thousand nineteen. We ended up putting down seed three or four times. Um, there's other issue, there's other things that occurred, but at the end of the day, the town of Wareham, the planning board, has an enforcement officer. His name is Mr. David Aquina. We worked with the enforcement officer to meet the requirements of the order of conditions. He then said, Mr. Clemmie, you've met your order of conditions. He reported that to the planning board. He reported it to Mr. Buckland. Unfortunately, some of the people that are on the meeting have alternative motives. That's fine. But the requirements of the order of conditions with the special permit, as they were written and as they were asked to be enforced by Mr. Aquina, have been met. The requirements by Mr. Puchet, who represents the Conservation Commission, were met. They were met four years ago for the Conservation Commission. We got our, we got our approval. We met the requirements. We met the requirements of the order of conditions. We worked with Mr. Aquina. We worked with Mr. Buckland. And at one point, we, we asked Mr. Buckland, how do we get this resolved? And he said, the enforcement officer is going to be involved. We work with Mr. Aquina. In fact, we had the town manager himself on site one day with, with Mr. Aquina to resu, to review the order of conditions, to review what we were doing. And we went through everything. So all of the conversations and all of the notifications may not be at the disposal of these people, but at the end of the day, you have a presentation in front of you from Mr. Deekus and everybody else. I don't have a copy of that presentation. I don't even care about the presentation because Mr. Aquina, as the enforcement officer, has the final say. They don't agree with him, which is their right to be here, but at the end of the day, Mr. Aquina is the professional hired by the town of Wareham to, to enforce the order of conditions, which he did. And I, I, I respect Mr. Aquina for his efforts. He made us through some things that we didn't think we had to do, but we did them. Mr. Buckland asked us to do things. We did them. That is their responsibility. And we met with them as the responsible parties, as the town administrators who are responsible for that activity. Now, a lot of these comments that are made about the order of conditions not being met simply aren't true. When you talk about four inches of loom, it, that's being in an email. That might have been mentioned in the email by somebody. The order of conditions is right here in my hand. There's no mention of four inches of loom. And the other thing I wanna be clear about with this piece of property. When we went to the planning board, and yes, we were not aware that the town of Wareham had a zoning bylaw that required you to go for a special permit for cutting of your own property over fifty thousand square feet, whatever the number was. But to Mr. Yakaboki, Yakaboshi, his comment, we submitted a full plan. There, there is a full plan on file with the, with the town of Wareham as to exactly what we were going to do, where we did it and what we did. There's a full plan. It wasn't provided to you by the appeal people. I don't know why. They didn't give you the full package. I don't know why. But at the end of the day, the plan was presented. We went to the planning board. The planning board specifically, in their order of condition, said, we do not want you to grade this land. Cut the trees, remove the stumps, leave the grades exactly as they are. Do not bring a bulldozer in there and level the land. They didn't want us bringing a bulldozer in. Subsequent to that, members of the, members of the planning board or other people said, well, you should be bringing in four inches of loom and all. It wasn't part of the order of conditions. If you read the actual order of conditions, it clearly states, a grass and wildflower mix of seed shall be spread as ground cover. One or combination of techniques to ensure germination and growth of ground cover such as, such as hydroseeding, watering and or fertilizing may be required as requested by the planning board. Nowhere in that order of conditions, which is on the official document from the planning board, does it say, bring in four inches of loom and you must hydroseed. It said, suggested and may be done. I leave it to Mr. Aquina, who I think has been put into a difficult situation. And I, I respect that, but I think as a professional, Mr. Aquina has done the best he can under the circumstances of the special permit and what was done and when it was done to meet a happy medium. At this point, if you look at the pictures from Mr. Aquina's report, the parcel of land is ninety percent filled with growth. It has some trees growing. It has growth underneath. It's, it's an active meadow at this point. I don't know what, I, I, I'm gonna ask the same question that one of the members asked. I don't know exactly what the, Mr. Deekus and his, and his, and his group wants us to do to this property. The property's been done. We met the order of conditions. It's now a growing meadow. Uh, maybe they want us to go in with a bulldozer and level it all. I don't think that's what anybody in the town wants us to do. It's now been two or three years. It's completely grown in. And I don't know what advantage to the town or anybody else there is to do, what work they want us to do to change this land that's now fully regenerated. So I will, I will refer again to Mr. Aquina, who is your professional, Mr. Buckland, who's your professional, and Mr. Puchet, who's your professional, as to if there are any outstanding issues on this property in their regard. Because they are the planning board administrator, the enforcement officer, and the conservation officer. With that, I will leave you. I have nothing more to say.
Alright, uh, alright, I guess the board has mixed emotions. I do agree with Jim about plans. I, I recommend that a fifty-three G account be opened and send Mr. Rowley or a differing firm, like, I, I think they use sometimes this engineering firm in Bourne or Mr. Rowley, either one, grow, go through step by step what the planning board did in their condition and go inspect it. And then we'll have a professional statement and we'll come back to this board. We'll, we'll, we'll get an extension and we'll come back here and we'll see if it's been met. Uh, is, uh, Mrs. Nora or Mr. Deekus, would you like to answer on that? If we have an engineer saying it's been met, is that satisfactory for you? You mute button. Thank you, mute.
Mr. Deekus, is Mr. Deekus still here? Cause he should be the one to decide.
Right, he just, he needs to take the, the mute button.
On the sides.
John, you gotta push the mute button. The mute button, your mute button. We can't hear you. Eric, oh.
Very sorry about it. The first time I've ever been on Zoom, so. I appreciate any effort to find a solution to this that's in everybody's best interest. Uh, I have met, along with Mr. Madden and, and Nora Bickie, with the town administrator on this and presented him with, uh, a possible compromise that I was, would be willing to take back to the neighborhood in order to, to deal with this somewhere, some where along the lines that you, you seem to be suggesting. My problem is this. We got Mr. Aquina here who made a comment about the, about the roads and, uh, and one of the members, uh, expressed her concern about the, the, the road damage. And it really is a good example of what we've been, uh, the frustration that we feel. The order of conditions, uh, what happened was there was a stump at the very edge of the road that when you pulled it up, it pulled out half the road with the roots and all of that and had to be repaired. The order of conditions clearly say, and I asked Mr. Buckland this at a meeting and he completely agreed with me. I said, the order of conditions say, any damage to the road, you immediately contact the town. The town comes down there, looks at it and determines what needs to be done by who. Okay? Instead of doing that, Mr. Clemmie filled it with something that looked like beach sand. Two or three rainstorms and it was a, just a pothole. Everybody was driving their car over it and all of that. Finally, one of the neighbors came by and, and, and stuff, stuck some stuff in there that, that, that helped improve it. The point is, I don't.
Point of order, point of order.
Mr. Deekus, one second. Go ahead, Jim. What's your point of order?
My point of order is that the chair asked Mr. Deekus to respond to a specific question and Mr. Deekus is currently continuing to argue a point that is irrelevant to the question that was asked. The question was regarding a fifty-three G account and a drawn set of plans.
Alright, tha- thank you, Jim. Mr. Deekus, let me ask a quick question to everyone. Is that town public road, a town-accepted road or a private?
Well, it's a public road, been used by the public, uh, for a hundred years.
Okay, alright. So to make story short, I mean, this guy, like, maybe would like, some other people would like to hear Mr. Enos and I see he wanted to speak, but is it satisfactory? If we hire a professional engineer, well, the applicant, I mean, not the applicant, the owner gonna have to get a fifty-three G account and come back with the plan and show us all that. I know he's, he's had, but if you, if you, if you don't agree to it, we'll have no choice but close the public hearing and take a vote. It's totally up to you, Mr. Clemmie. So, it's a satisfactory with the plan.
Mr. Chairman. You, you can't.
Ask me a question, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Mr. Buckland, I'm sorry.
One sec, one other time. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, you can't open a fifty-three G account on this, uh, application. It's an appeal that doesn't, doesn't, uh, fifty-three G doesn't apply to. Uh, the applicant would have to put up the money to, uh, do that or you would have to go to the board of selectmen for the issuance of, of funds for the purpose of, of, uh, hiring a, a consultant.
Alright, well, we'll, uh, we're gonna, I wanna see what the board member wish to see. We would like to ask the, the applicant, uh, Mr. Clemmie, who did the damage to the land, if he's willing to make a plan and show us that he did what he's supposed to do. Uh, Mr. Enos, you wanted to speak?
Well, hold on, you, you asked me a question first, Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
So, be- before Mr. Enos certificates, I, I wanna be clear. Why, thi- this is all part of a bigger plan by Mr. Deekus, Mr. Enos, Mr. Balzerini about control of the neighborhood and influencing what we do on our property. I wanna be perfectly clear on something. We, why would you ask us, why would you ask us to provide funds to prove what your enforcement officer has already proven? I am not going to sign up to spend more of my money because Mr. Deekus has a problem with it. If he wants to hire an engineer, let him hire an engineer. Let the town hire an engineer. I will not, I will not agree for me to pay for work that the town has already approved through Mr. Aquina, Mr. Buckland and Mr. Puchet. They've approved the project because, because they want to continue the harassment in their activities. They want me to pay? That's not gonna happen, sir.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Enos. Mr. Enos, you mute button, sir.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Ron Enos. I, uh, live at seven Burgess Point Road in Wareham. After listening to, uh, Ms. Bickie and, um, Mr. Balzerini's presentation, there's no, not much more I can say or add to the evidence that's been presented. I mean, it's been very, uh, clear and concise in my mind that, that these conditions have not been met. And it clearly proves that there were, um, mistakes made at the town level and that this applicant has played this board and disrespected the town and the board at all levels. The same applicant has done this many times in dealing with the town and the boards, including recently adding an addition to a dock that was never permitted. It just goes on and on and on. So it's a game. It's played on and on. The town needs to take a stance on this and it's time that this board held this, uh, applicant accountable. And I believe you will. So that something finally comes to fruition. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Enos. Anyone else wanna speak in this matter? Because I think we're gonna continue this matter. Mr. Clemmie, one minute. Anyone else? Mr. Marcel, Bruce Marcel?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Name an address, please.
Bruce Marcel, thirty-six Burgess Point Road.
Yes.
I've lived here for twenty years and I've driven by this property. And when it was initially cleared, it was sort of a wasteland. It's redeveloped in the last few years into a nicely grassed area with pine trees growing along the edge, a few pine trees in the middle. Uh, deer feed there all the time and to have it graded and brought back to its original condition, I think would be a travesty. I think the land is developing nicely as a meadow. And it should, should be continued to do that. I don't know what the original purpose of the land was. But I think right now, it's really pretty nice to drive by, whereas two or three years ago it was not.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Marcel.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Ron.
Could I ask a question for some clarification?
Yeah.
So, this project is approved as a special permit as long as the conditions have been met. Is that not correct?
Correct.
So if it's determined that the conditions have not been met, then the special permit is no, is not actually.
You're right, but Mr. Aquina says they've been met.
And so that we're here to, um, decide whether or not that appealed to say that it has not, it needs to be reevaluated, correct? So that potentially.
Either we're here to either, uh, agree with Mr. Aquina or overturn his decision.
And if. So, let's say, this, um, per, thi- this is, this decision by Mr. Aquina is appealed by the board. Mr. Aquina decides to go back out or whatever happens and it's determined that these conditions have not been met. Where do we go from there?
Then Mr. Clemmie has to go back to address what's not met. But right now, we don't have what's before us right now. Mr. Aquina saying it's met.
Well, okay, but let me ask, if this special permit was based with conditions that had to be done by a certain date and if they're not done, why would the special permit still be allowed to have these conditions met? That would seem to me that it's no longer approved.
I mean, that's a question, be a good question for the planning board, not for us. I don't know what's following us, but I would still really, really like to hear from the planning board and get a clean bill of health from them either way. Say it's not met or met. I don't understand why they can't do this, but I, I mean, they do on every other project.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, it was because they had reviewed chapter forty A of Mass General laws and determined that the building commissioner is the only one that can enfor, enforce the special permit.
Okay, yes, Mr. Aquina, come here. Mute. Mute button, David.
Yeah. Yep, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, just to clarify a couple of other items. What, and, and I'd like to ask Mr. Enos, Mr. Deekus, a- anyone who, who wants to volunteer and need information. How can I enforce the requirement for notification to the planning board as to where they're gonna bring the stumps? Now, when, when that happened, I, I wasn't employed by the town, okay? However, it's a condition that Mr. Clemmie notify the board However, it's a condition that Mr. Clemmie notify the board before he moved the stumps or to where he's gonna relocate the stumps at the time. How is that enforceable today? What can I do today to bring that day back? Okay? As far as the hay bales are concerned.
Sir, one second, sir. Nobody's speaking, just Mr. Aquina.
I will provide the location. I will provide the location.
Sir, Mr. Aquina only. Go ahead, David.
Okay. So, this was not just a decision that I made in my own little bubble, Mr. Deekus. Okay, this involved interviewing people, employees from the town, other town officials. It involves a lot of meetings to the site. If you read the actual order of conditions, not the emails, not what was requested after the fact, but if you read the letter of the actual order of conditions that was issued, okay, you'll find, and I think internally you know, that there is no enforcement that can be made here. The hay bales, okay? I personally met with Mr. Pachet. The, the request for hay bales was, was based on a conservation requirement. Okay, Mr. Pachet told me himself in a meeting that they were no longer required. That he had met his condition through the, through the board and they're no longer required. So how can I require maintenance of a hay bale line that's no longer required? Okay? As far as all the seating is concerned, if you read the order of conditions, there is no requirement for eighty percent cover, fifty percent cover, forty percent cover. There's no performance bond issue, none of that is on. If you look at the pictures in my, in my order, in my letter, you'll see that the field is grown. I don't need to tell you that, you know, you live there. So what, what can I do today that'll change the outcome or that'll change what's written in my letter? What can I enforce any differently that's gonna change the outcome of how that site looks based on the wording of the order of conditions? Okay, I think the bigger question here is where do you expect this to go? Because it has reached where the order of conditions required that it go. I cannot, as an enforcement officer, bring a matter to court or into litigation that has met the requirements of the order. I can't bring in arbitrary decisions. I can't bring in my opinion or your opinion or anyone else's for that matter. I can enforce the letter of the law. And according to that order of conditions, the letter of the law has been met. I can't go back retroactively and say, "Mr. Clemmie should have called the board." I had meetings with other town officials that suggested that there were conversations regarding where the stumps were. And yes, that's hearsay, but there's no conclusive evidence that says it didn't happen. So there, there's nothing here in the list of items that I said are not in compliance prior that are gonna change the outcome of how that site looks today. And if there's anything else that I should have done or that you feel I could do today that meets the letter of the law and is going to change how that site looks tomorrow or in a year from now, please let me know. But I don't know what that is.
All right, Mr. Deekus, go ahead.
Yeah, listen, I've done business nationally and internationally. I've done a lot of, lot of, uh, face-to-face business deals in my life and I've learned one lesson. And one lesson is determine who you're talking to if they're, if, if they are acting in good faith. I think that's the question we need to ask here. Are we acting, and this is Mr. Clemmie, acting in good faith? Is Mr. Aquina, with what he just said, saying that in good faith? Now, let me tell you something and I will then give you a, a, a thought on how, if we're acting in good faith, how we might bring this thing to a conclusion. But first of all, let me tell you this. This, this property was supposed to be cleaned up. Mr. Aquina had certain requirements, almost had certain requirements to see to it that that was done. The stumps were removed and all this and that. Do you know, let me tell you this. Mr. Clemmie, as we speak today, has been using this property for a dumping ground. He trucks in seaweed from other sites. He trucks tree branches that had come down from storms from other. He does, don't interrupt me. He, he brings in, uh, he, he brings in debris, uh, horticultural debris, grass clippings from his other properties, properties that are not related to this site, and he dumps them there, right across from my driveway. Now, how, I would ask each and every one of you, how'd you like to get up in the morning and look at? And I've shown, I've sent a picture in. And one of the pictures that I sent in was a whole bunch of big tree branches that came down from a recent storm from another site, one that he owns in the area. And, and not only did he dump them on the property, but when he saw me taking his picture, he started dumping it over the hay bales into the property that Mr. Rutherford Conservation Committee felt should be protected. Is that a man acting in good faith? Is that a man?
Mr. Deekus, if I may, if I may, we, we go on.
Yeah, go ahead.
We, we, we go on off zoning here. This is personal matter. We don't wanna get into this matter. Uh, boards, what do you wish? You wanna continue this? What do you like to do? Like, sir, we get the point. Thank, we, we get the point.
Well, I don't know.
It's kind of late. Sir, and I guarantee you, Mr., uh, our commissioner is in good faith because he's just doing his job. I mean, it's, it's a preference what you think if he's in good faith or not. But board member, what do you like to do?
Here's, here's the final thing, but let me make one final.
Quick, please.
Quite met recently with the town administrator and offered him a suggestion that might lead to a compromise. I always found that when you get into these things and you get tangled, people can make self, uh, you know, uh, uh, declarations that, 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 you know, that they're not offered in good faith. Mr. Clemmie promised the planning board, within a reasonable period of time, that he would present them with a plan of what he intends to do with that site. He gave them a time specific. I forget how many months, six, seven, eight months, something like that. He never did that. The planning board wanted to know that, uh, in order so that they could help determine in their mind how they should act, uh, on these, on these events and what, what they can do to, to move this issue along. If he came in, now, he, he told them he had two issues that he was thinking about. One was something to do with horses or pasture or something like that. The other was a subdivision, two, three, four lots, whatever he, he, he intends to do. He said it'll probably be one of those two things. Now, he said that, that if he's willing to do that, my compromise is, okay, fine. Meet with him, let him present his plan. Let's say it's a, let's say it's a subdivision. Okay? What does he have to do to present that subdivision? He has to go before the appropriate boards. He has to go before the planning board and all of that. He has to present a plan, a map, a design, an engineering design. And he, and they will look at it and they then will impose the restrictions or the conditions that will allow them to accept that. If he does that and it puts three or four house lots in there, which is his right, I'm not trying to stop him what his, what his rights are, then fine, he has to dress it up, fix it up, maybe plant some trees, maybe fix up the yards, whatever it is. And, 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 and that field then gets taken care of. Anybody that says that that's a fully grown, uh, area, you go down there and take a look at it, it's not. It's exactly the way those aerial photos show it. So, why don't we use that as a beginning, as a starting point and have him present to the town of Wareham, a specific plan? Why did he cut down five acres? He had to have a reason. He first said, "I just wanted to see what it looked like if all the trees were cut down." What kind of an answer is that? Secondly, he said in response to a question, this is all on tape, we can verify this, that it's either gonna be a, a agricultural situation with horses or it's going to be a subdivision. Fine, bring those before us and let the town determine what the specifics in terms of timelines or what period of time he has to accomplish that. Bring it to the town of Wareham, let them review it, let them accept it, amend it or, or whatever. And then I'll be happy across the street. I don't mind looking at horses. I don't mind looking at two or three homes over there, whatever it is. I'm, I'm not it, but how would any of you like to live there now? Have somebody across the street from you dumping debris and junk and, and, and wood chips and, and, and all that debris?
Again, Mr. Deekus, I'm gonna have to, Mr. Deekus, I understand your frustration. I understand your frustration, but again, we're going off the subject what we're here for.
Oh, that's not off.
Sir. If he, if, we're not, I'm not gonna go there and discuss, but let's, let's continue this matter. Maybe we take a visit, all of us drive by there. Let's do a continuance, uh, for, uh, twenty-six.
I, I would make that motion, but, um, just if I might, for fifteen seconds prior to making that motion, um, going back to the conversation about a plan being presented and somebody paying an engineer to draw that plan. Um, um, in hearing there was a plan way back when, but, um, as far as fifty, fifty-three G or it's my, it would be my opinion that if somebody was gonna bear the burden of drawing a plan, it would be the applicant, which are the people that are Mr. Deekus, Mr. Balzerini and, 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 oh. Um, they're, they're the ones that are trying to prove something. I think that burden should go on them if they want to present a plan. But again, we need to focus on what's in front of us. And what's in front of us is, are we gonna tell Mr. Aquina that we don't think he made the right decision? Or are we gonna tell Mr. Aquina he made the right decision based on the evidence that's been provided to us? We need to focus on what's in front of us. We keep getting offline. All, all my little, all my little speech aside, I make a motion to continue until the next meeting, two weeks from tonight.
All right, we, uh, we have a motion. During this time, if, whatever, everybody has a plan, I see Mr. Clemmie has a plan, send it down. Everybody, if they could take a ride down there, look at it. I don't know, don't discuss with each other about it, talk about it, keep your thought to yourself. And I guess, uh, we'll come back on the twenty-sixth. Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second motion.
Second, the more, second by Troy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
And myself, I, we'll see you again on the twenty seconds, on the twenty-sixth, sorry, twenty-sixth. January twenty-sixth. All right, thank you, gentlemen, ladies, gentlemen, thank you. All right, next, uh, case, sixty-eight dash twenty-one, Bay State Hemp, a used variance, three oh six five Cranberry Highway. Who's here for that?
Uh, my name is John Nathan.
All right, just give us a minute. Let's read this into the record and you on.
Yep, give me one second. Pulling up right now.
All right.
All right, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on January twelfth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM on Zoom to consider petition number sixty-eight twenty-one for a used variance from the requirements of Article Three, Section three twenty and Article fourteen, Section fourteen seventy-one under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Bay State Hemp, uh, fifty-six Jan Marie Drive, Plymouth, Mass, seeking to change the use of a tenant space to a hemp processing facility at the subject property located at thirty sixty-five Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass, Unit C eleven, assessor's map, eleven lot, a thousand dash B in the CS zoning district.
Okay, very well. Who's, who's representing, uh, Bay State Hemp?
Uh, that would be me.
Okay, name and address, sir?
Sure, my name is John Nathan. I live at fifty-six Jan Marie Drive, Plymouth, Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Um, what we basically are is we're an industrial hemp processing facility. Uh, we've been operating for two years in the town of Plymouth. And, uh, we're simply looking to move our location to three oh six five Cranberry Highway. Um, the exact unit that we're applying for a used variance for has been previously approved for, uh, marijuana businesses that have a very similar function and, uh, method of operation as us. So, um, currently, right now, the location is zoned as strip commercial. So we are looking to have a used variance for light manufacturing. Um, that's, that's basically it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's start by Jim. What do you think, Jimmy?
Uh, first of all, um, I, I'd like to, can we identify the property through the, through the chair to the applicant or to anybody that can help me, um, with more than just an address? What was it formally? What is it? Kind of, you know?
Jim, it's the old Ocean Spray building across from Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, all right, that.
Do you have any plans you could put on side, on the, on the screen?
No, that answers my question.
Yeah?
That is my question.
Basically, marijuana is allowed over there as a dispensary or growing. Unfortunately, hemp is not, so.
So that's the, that's my next question. What's the difference between hemp and marijuana? What makes?
I guess, uh, hemp don't get you high marijuana, does it?
Correct. So, uh, the difference between hemp and marijuana, they're both the same plant. They're both cannabis sativa, but the method of action and the amount of THC, which is the psychoactive material, uh, called cannabinoids that's found in the plant, we do not work with THC. We work with non-psychootropic, non-anebriating compounds and, uh, we supply those to the marijuana industry. We are not under marijuana laws. We are not licensed under the Cannabis Control Commission. We are considered industrial agriculture in the state of Massachusetts. Um, our overseeing regulating authority is the, uh, Department of Agricultural Resources. So, the difference in a nutshell is, uh, we're federally legal. Um, we're state legal. Um, marijuana is, is obviously federally illegal and, uh, state regulated by the CCC.
Uh, thank you. Got, uh, okay, Rich, let me go to you. What do you think?
Can I give my opinion at the end? Can you go to somebody else?
Yeah, okay, Veronica.
Um, I just wanna be, so it's, is, is it currently, you said it's not currently growth, right?
We don't grow.
No, I mean, at the location, the thirty sixty-five Cranberry Highway has no current growth?
No, it's, it's just an empty building.
So, the request is to change the use to an agricultural?
Well, let me, let me explain to you quick. Here's the thing. Uh, in the past, we have, uh, approved play, uh, people that manufacture, like companies, like Cupcake with THC, with marijuana, stuff like this, which is in that location, it's an allowed use. In his case, they manufacture the same things, maybe they manufacture ropes. I don't know what they manufacture with hemp, but it doesn't have that THC in it. It's not allowed use, it's not allowed use. So the, the use is only if you producing some product with, has to do with marijuana. So what he wants to do, make a used variance so he could manufacture his hemp. Does it make sense or I let Mr. John explain it more?
Um, I, I, it does. I guess it kind of clarifies a little because I know, I was a little confused at first because the bylaws don't allow any kind of a variance for uh, ma- for a marijuana facility, so.
Right, but, but this area is allowed for marijuana. This area, this section of the town, if somebody wants to go manufacture marijuana, they can.
We're not marijuana, though.
But then marijuana.
Yeah, which, which I, right, I understand that.
Which is, I think, on the next zoning change, if Commissioner Aquina take notes, we should add hemp to be allowed to be manufactured anywhere in town. You know, I don't see, what's the difference? I mean, that's, but if it's federally recognized and state, well, the state recognizes and it's not, doesn't get you high, I don't see why, why not use and have, like, manufacturing hemp? But that's besides the point. I'll go back.
Okay, I, the only thing I would say is that I would like to, to know, you know, hear from Charlie on this in terms of it's gonna be used for an agricultural purpose.
Charlie for what?
Rowley.
For what?
Drainage, water use, all those things that come into play.
That's, it's not, it's inside the building.
Oh, it's, oh, it's interior, okay.
It's inside, yeah, it's inside the building.
Would, there would still be water requirements for an interior agricultural?
No, no, they manufacture, they manufacture, they're not planting.
But don't they have to water it for, oh, oh, they're not growing yet?
John, let John explain.
Sorry, I, I'm not trying to interrupt anybody. Um, so we work with local licensed hemp farmers throughout the state of Massachusetts. They bring us their already dried, uh, ready-to-go, uh, materials. We bring those materials in and we turn those into an extracted isolate powder. So if you've heard of CBD, we make a lot of CBD, um, which, uh, once again, falls under the Agricultural Improvement Act of two thousand eighteen, which deemed it federally legal. Um, we're approved under the. Um, we are approved under the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture. Um, who has an approved USDA state plan, everything we do is in full compliance. We've been operating for two years out of Plymouth, we've never had any infractions, any issues, all of our inspections have gone great. We have a great rapport with the, the industry here in Massachusetts. We're planning on hiring in the next three, four months, we plan on doing that in the town of Wareham.
That answer your question, Bronco, so there's no?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I'd go to Troy, Troy?
I don't have any questions, I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't allow it.
Correct, okay, Richard, any thoughts?
No, not at this time.
All right, anyone on the public wanna speak in favor or against this project? Uh, yes, sir, David Candias, yes, sir.
Uh, yes, I, I'm actually representing Onset Water Department and we are.
Just name an address for the record.
Uh, David Candias, Onset Water Department, fifteen Centpon Road. Uh, and we, we are not opposed to it and we're not advocating for it. My only concern is that the property itself needs to have a testable backflow prevention device. And that's the only reason I wanted to speak on it was the owner of the property. Uh, has indicated that he would be upgrading that, uh, device and as of today has not, it's been about six months that I've been requesting that. So I have no problem with the facility being used for whatever purpose is intended. Uh, my only concern is if there's any water use within the building, uh, that I won't prevent any back siphonage issue. If there are any chemicals used on the property and as of right now, it was a device that I cannot test to ensure. It can, uh, protect the water supply, so that is my only concern and that's with the building owner, not with this, uh, with Bay State Hemp itself. So I just, uh, just wanna make sure that points in there with the plumbing inspector and that gets resolved for, uh, there's any production that happens there.
All right, we could, we could always put a condition that the backflow be installed, so there was never a backflow installed there?
There is, it's just not a testable device, it's so old that there are no, uh, test ports for us to actually connect the device to ensure that it's working properly. And again, this is not, uh, Bay State's issue as the property owner, but I, um, I, I'm really here to speak about a different project. But because this was within my water system, I wanna just make that one comment, but aside from that, I support it, we're creating jobs. Uh, it's supporting, uh, Onset's, uh, customer base and business base, so I'm, I'm finding it a hundred percent. With that one caveat, that device be upgraded, that's all.
Thank you, thank you, David. All right, let's go back to, okay, uh. Well, John, we might have to put a condition on that, you have to bring it back to Mister Ferry. To the owner, leave Mister Ferry, right?
Yes.
That has to be installed properly. Uh, anyone else would like to speak on that? Did Jim gone, Jimmy? Hope you're still there. All right, uh, would you get, would you like to add anything, John, before we close?
Uh, no, I, I appreciate your time.
All right, that being said, can we make a motion to close this public hearing?
Make a motion to close this public hearing.
All right, we have a motion by Richard to close, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye, Veronica.
Aye.
Troy.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
And myself, I, Jimmy. Jimmy. Okay, would Jimmy go? All right, uh. Jimmy. Okay, Jimmy's not here, so let's make, uh, somebody would like to make a motion? Veronica, do you like to make a motion?
Oh, oh, can we make a motion without Jim or?
Yeah, you can.
I will make a motion to approve as presented with standard conditions and with the, um, condition that the backflow. Be approved by.
According to the Onset Water Department specs.
Yes.
Okay, very good, so I have a motion by Veronica, do I have a second on that?
I second, sir.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye, Richard.
Aye.
Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
And myself, it's a I, and I guess that's a carries, you only need four votes, so you're good.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, so four zero zero. All right, very good, uh, next one, sixty-nine dash twenty-one, you can, you can be co, you can be company. All right, special permit for three oh five nine Cranberry Highway. All right, Aaron, let's hear it.
Uh, okay, there's only more of appeals, we'll hold a public hearing on January twelfth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty P M on Zoom. To consider petition number sixty-nine dash twenty-one for a special permit from the requirements of Article Three. Table three twenty under the Wareham zoning bylaws to you can be co of thirty sixty-five Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Massachusetts. Seeking to operate a marijuana production facility at the subject property. Located at thirty fifty-nine Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Massachusetts, Assessor's map eleven lot a thousand dash B in the C S zoning district.
Okay, very well, who's presenting this case?
Um, Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects.
Let's hear it.
Uh, good evening, um, you can be co, um, wants to do marijuana processing. They're gonna use a couple of different processes, they're gonna use about sixteen hundred and fifty square feet in the old, um. In the same, same facility, I'm not sure if it's exactly where they, um, assert it's not exactly the same spot, but we're in the big building. Uh, towards the back. At six hundred and fifty square, sixteen hundred and fifty square feet, the whole total building is about a hundred and ten thousand square feet. Uh, they will be, um, taking raw cannabis and, um, making various, uh, products and substances from that. And wholesaling those, they won't, won't be doing any retail, uh, work on premises, um, uh. And they, they will be using odor mitigation as well as other safety procedures as proposed by the Cannabis Control Commission. We can, um. They look in your packet, you can see where in the facility they're located, um. And there's also a floor, a preliminary floor plan of how they intend to use, utilize the space and be some office space, there'll be some secure storage. There's some shipping, an extraction containment unit, uh, dishwashing and, um, some, um, other. Uh, benches and machine read for, uh, processing the, uh, the cannabis resin. Um, that's basically what we're up to, the, uh, it is, as you previously stated, um, approved use in this area. Um, and we're here for the special permit to allow that use.
All right, uh, Mister Lockwood, I, apparently Mister Akwachi. He's not with us, I don't know what happened. Before we go further, you have the right to be heard by, with the five board member, you wanna continue with four, you need four, are four? Or you wanna, you wanna try to wait for Mister Akwachi?
Uh, I would think we would probably like to see Mister Akwachi return.
Let me see if he lands.
I mean, that he is in good health and I hope so.
Yeah, he's fine, he was just here.
Chairman.
I don't know what happened.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, yes, Richard.
I was just wondering, does David Candias have anything, does? Any input on this, is this another thing that's gonna go through, need water or need anything?
This is the same, yeah, this is the same building, so they, the same requirement. Uh, we won't require individually, but we're gonna recommend to the building owner, which I've already spoken to about that. Within your facility, sir, when you're doing the processing, there may be some chemicals that you use within your bay of that entire property. That if they were back siphonage in, into the building, even though there may be a device protecting my, uh, water mains. Uh, other tenants could potentially be affected by that, so what we, what we're recommending to the owner is. A device be installed at the entrance point of the building and that the entrance point to your bay, a smaller, uh, what they call a reduced pressure backflow prevention device, an RPZ. Be installed there, uh, they're fairly inexpensive, a few hundred dollars. Um, and it would basically be at the point of entry into your facility, the water used there, so if God forbid there was an incident, it wouldn't be, uh, sucked back into the plumbing within the building. And then we'd have the initial device at the entrance to the entire building structure that would protect the water mains. So there really should be two devices, one to protect the entire water main and one to protect the internal customers outside of your facility. But again, that part, we do leave more up to the, to the building owner. Our, our main concern for Onset Water Department is our water mains and having that device at the entrance, uh, be updated to a modern device. So that's the only requirements must, we're, we support any business growth within the town, we're happy to see it happen. Uh, but that's just our one thing for safety concerns for the water.
All right, thank you, so, so it's not a requirement, but you're recommended.
Uh, the internal one is not required by us, the one at the entrance to the building is, so there are two devices on, on.
Right, the, the, the one at the entrance of the building, it's gonna go with the other permit. But we could regenerate with this one as well.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, very well, all right.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you, David, thank you, sir. Uh, all right, uh, Veronica, what do you think? You, mute. Mute, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I just need a little bit of time to review this, um, a little bit.
Okay, uh, Troy, what do you think?
Uh, well, I don't really have any issues with it, I mean. It's allowed in that area and it can only help the town.
Oh, right, well, that's true, and most of the stuff, uh, they're regulated by the state and monitored by the state, so.
Right.
Have much to do with them, but anyway, Richard, what do you think, where do you go? What's Richard?
Yeah, sir. Um, no, I just wanted to make sure that we were covering our bases or something down the road doesn't happen like that case before us that. Just dot our i's and cross our t's.
Yeah, Jimmy, what do you think?
Um, uh, first of all, I apologize for standing up and walking away halfway through the water department's comments. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with allowing this use.
All right, going back to Veronica, what do you think, Veronica? Just to read it. So Bill, explain to me more, this is more of a manufacturer, they manufacture cake candy like this or they plant?
No, there, there's no growing going on, no, this is, they get, uh, uh, raw paste, uh, and they, they process. They, they get raw material and they process it into paste, which is then made into product by other people, as I understand it. And the owners are on the call here somewhere, so I think that they could respond better to that and to that than I could.
Right, I think we, we approved something like this, if you guys recall, behind that tattoo place next to. Advance Auto Park, they, they manufacture such thing and other places in town where through a bunch of them. Okay, Mister, Mister, Mrs. Hanson, who would like to speak? Tell us more about it, just your name and address for the record?
Sure, it's Michelle Hanson, twenty-four Prince Way, Pembroke, Mass. Uh, I am the owner, we're a woman-owned, um, business, small, uh, and locally owned and we are, are a manufacturer, so. We have no public access and, uh, we do no cultivation at the site. Um, we will be an extraction facility, so we'll take that biomass and, uh, break it down into its distilled version. And we will either sell it to other, um, manufacturers who don't extract. Or, um, we will use it to make our own products. Um, and then sell them directly to wholesale, who will sell it to the public.
Okay. Uh, well, Veronica, read it, anyone on the public would like to comment on favor or against? I hear none, so Veronica, back to you.
Excuse me, Mister Chairman, I have my hand up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, who was speaking?
Brenda Ekstrom.
Hi, hi, Brenda, yes, what do you, hey, how are you, what do you like to say?
Um, it's really a question for the board, um, this is allowed under special permit, is that what it is? Is that what they hear?
Yeah, because it's allowed use over, over there.
It's, it's an allowed use under special permit or it's an allowed use under zoning?
Under special permit from zoning board.
Okay, so, um, is it just that, I, is it just that area of strip commercial or all strip commercial?
No, just that east Wareham, I think it starts from, uh. Basically where the Cape, Cape or that, that tight place, I believe.
From Depot Street, Depot Street.
Oh, from Depot, from Depot all the way to, to the, to the bridge, I think the whole stretch is allowed. This, this kinda work is allowed, that like growing, dispensary, uh, manufacturing.
All right, well, I, I mean, I'm sure there's nothing to not let them go through, but I hope that the town planner and the zoning board. Um, recognizes that we are now being known as Weedham, not Wareham. They're from, they're from Pembroke, the other ones that were in last time were from, um, I believe, um. Mansfield or Marshfield or whatever, so people are coming here, it's great that we have their revenue, but it's also not a great, um, thing to be known for. Um, I, like I said, there's no reason not to let it go through because it's allowed, but I just hope you keep that in mind and maybe. We could do something about it going forward, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Miss Ekstrom, but I mean, the town voted, the, the people had voted to accept this kinda. Business and activities back in two thousand sixteen, so the people have spoken, so nothing we could do about it.
Oh, no, I agree, that's what I'm saying, is that there isn't anything, but you know, maybe Mister Buckland can change his mind now that we've got this great inflow of it.
I don't think it's up to Mister Buckland, but that's why, well, he's listening, so maybe he could change the, the bylaw. So you make all these people happy, no more competition, they'll be all happy.
Exactly, maybe they'll support us with it.
Yeah, maybe they will, all right, so going back to, thank you, thank you, brother. All right, Veronica, what do you think?
Um, I'm, I'm not opposed to the project, um, the sales to other companies, not the general public. I think it's stated, just out of curiosity, what are the hours?
Um, nine to five, Monday through Friday.
Unless they get very busy, they work nights.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I'm hoping to expand those hours, but right now, well, we are listed with the CCC as nine to five and we are required to update them if we change those hours.
Okay, so that being said, uh, let's move to close.
Moved.
I have a motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
And myself, the chair Nazi, aye. Okay, motions and discussion.
I moved to grant relief as requested by the applicant with standard conditions.
So I have a motion by Jim, any discussion on the motion? I hear none, do I have a second?
Uh, I, was there, there was a comment by the Onset Water Department for the internal.
Internal backflow, it's optional, if they would like to install it, that'd be great, that'd be, I mean, you'll enhance the water quality if you. Let's, a few hundred bucks, it'd be real nice if you do that, uh, on your own, but it's not.
I, I thought that should be a demand, I didn't think it was an option.
No, the, the demand was on the other one to, for the building, the main, the, the water coming in, the main one, the, the backflow for the whole building, Rich. But, uh, Mister David Candias said it's an option for internal ones, so each unit has an internal one. So Mister Candias still here, he could explain more.
So I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that. If they're, if they, if they're gonna, if they have the option, I would like to see them fulfill that option.
Okay, we could put a condition like this, yeah, you can, yeah, okay, that's why we discussion, you wanna put a condition to fulfill this option, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a condition to install an internal backflow. Anything else?
So, am, am I hearing this correctly, you'd like a backflow preventer to be installed at the point of entry into this particular unit? So it can't backflow into any other unit within the same facility, same property?
Correct, this is how Mister Candias explained it and it makes.
I understand backflow presenters, uh, well, I just wanted to clarify it, it's not, we're not screwing something onto the sink that, where they hook up a hose, you want it. At the point of entry into the unit.
Correct, yeah, there, there may be some plumbing code requirements that are, that supersede, uh, the water department requirements, so that they, they may. Eventually the plumbing inspector may require them to put something in, but for us, it's, we're really a total containment, so it's at the point of entry at the building. I'm just recommending internally, but that's totally up to the business.
Uh, I'm trying to split the hair. I understand that you have a backflow preventer at the meter. That prevents the entire building from backfalling into the municipal supply.
Correct.
But you, what I'm saying is you want to put a preventer. Similar to a whole building preventer where any water enters this unit and then the water within the unit. Always used thereafter, not at each faucet.
Yeah, each faucet, those are like hosebiv adapters, if they only had, say, one sink in the entire, uh, production facility. Then they could get away with, uh, something like an atmosphere. Then they could get away with uh something like an atmosphere, uh atmospheric breaker, uh but it would be better if those, the water line entering into that unit. Had the RPZ, which would dump, so that there's, there could be no pressure or suction. That would uh pull any potentially any chemicals into the rest of the building, so again, that's something that the plumbing inspector may require, that's above and beyond what the water department requires.
Okay, very good, so we have that condition to install an internal backflow as well, Veronica, any more discussion? Standard condition, okay, all in favor, say aye, Richard?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, it carries, you're good. Mr. Mrs. Hanson, you're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, in uh. In any other business, somebody asked me to discuss something, hmm.
So when I look at the agenda, they had the same thing on twice, are we on the second? The, when I, when I looked, I'm going by memory right now, Naz, um, but when I looked at the agenda earlier this evening.
Yeah.
It seemed as though these folks were listed under a corporate name and under. Seemed like the same address was listed twice, were there two different applications?
Uh, yeah, it's the three oh five nine and three oh six five, maybe that could confuse the Cranberry Highway, they're all at the ferry building.
Yeah, they're, uh, Mr. Kabachi, they're both at the same building, so the address is just different units, so that's why the uh. The address, they're similar, though, they're almost right next to each other.
Well, it wasn't presented to us as two separate um applications, it was one application, it was just listed with the two units.
Right. No, no, same, same building, different locations in the building. You have, Mr. and Miss Hanson, you're renting from Mr. Ferry, right?
That's correct, and uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in a separate unit.
Separate unit, yeah. Alright, alright, thank you, you, you guys all said, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, something about Settlers Glen, uh, I guess they were gonna discuss the water thing tonight, and uh. I guess the attorneys' mothers, I, I hate to say this.
Had a death in the family.
She died, or she got sick or something. Uh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Jim O'Brien, and I go cold regarding Settlers.
Oh, oh, okay, here you are, sorry, okay, yes, here we are, yeah, alright, so you, you here for, with Settlers Glen, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, and you guys wanna be heard, or you guys wanna continue?
I think we'd like to start the process by being heard.
Okay.
Uh, cause the attorneys have communicated, so I think the. Uh, best thing is to try to give the board some information, and then we expect, uh, all of us may want to continue it.
Okay, so let's hear it, and that's something about the water looping, what, looping the line, correct?
Yes, um, in late July, we approached the water department to find out what was needed for application and fees. And in August, the water department informed me that I had to fill out an ability to serve request and post a ten thousand dollar bond. In addition, they informed me I would be required to install a water main loop from the end of the cul-de-sac of the site. Down an easement across land I do not own, and then across four lanes of state highway. This is not part of the approved permit set that the ZBA has issued the comprehensive permit on. So I informed them that I already had a design and comprehensive permit in place, which did not require a looped water main. At my first meeting, I offered to install the water main down the easement if they waived my fees and dropped off the pipe. And installed across the main Cranberry Highway. The superintendent informed me that if I did not install the water main, I would not be given water. I informed the superintendent that I would be forced then to file with the ZBA accordingly. I then asked to meet with the water commissioners and discuss the matter further. Our first meeting was canceled with no date certain to return. I then prepared an application on September eighth, twenty twenty-one, and filed it with the water department. They asked me to file a ten thousand dollar escrow account for review of the water system, which the ZBA had approved. And we satisfied that the following week. According to the regulations, a review and response should be completed within thirty days by the water department. Date, I have not seen a response. After the application was filed, we again asked to meet with the commission, and they accommodated that first meeting, in which I outlined. The same parameters I expressed with the superintendent. We then further discussed another option. Whereby they waived their fees, and I installed the water main loop and supplies to the easement property line. They complete the line across Cranberry Highway. Our understanding of the rules and regulations in place at the time by the water department. Is that the rate schedule for an eight-inch water main system development fee to be connected off of Redbrook Road. Would be forty-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Which is to be paid before any work can begin. Of course, we're willing to pay that because we have an eight-inch water main design coming off of Redbrook Road. On page three of the regulations, it states, the water department and only the water department will tap the water mains. Install a corporation, lay the appropriate-sized water service from the main to the property line, and install a stop and waste valve at the property line. On page three of the regulations, it states, after a period of not less than ten days from the approval date of the service application, the water department will install the water service. On page four of the regulation, it states, the property owner will be responsible for laying the remainder of the service from the property line to the home, to the house. And on page six of the regulations, it states, the cost of installing a radio red meter. Along with the cost of any fittings used by the water department for the installation, will be the responsibility of the water department. All water meters will remain the property of the onset water department. Having read that, along with the recorded plan and approved comprehensive permit, we interpreted the work scope to simply be that the water department would tap the main of Redbrook Road. Bring it to the property line for a fee of forty-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. And I would run the remaining system in my private property, within my private road, to all of the homes as necessary. As part of that fee, the water meter would be installed when called to do so. I may be mistaken, but the explanation I was given by the water superintendent is that they expected me to pay the forty-two thousand. Eight hundred and forty dollars for the eight-inch line development fee. Pay the twenty thousand to my own contractor to install the line from Redbrook Road to my property line. Patch all asphalt, repair streets as needed, pay for and install all the piping within my private property. And then pay an additional three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars for a one-inch tap fee for each service. That would equate to another seventy-one thousand four hundred dollars. Then I would have to pay a twelve-inch tap fee on Cranberry Highway, which was about sixty thousand dollars. And I would have to pay a hundred thousand dollars to install the looped water main. That would be a total of three hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars in fees to connect twenty units. And I pay for and install all of the systems. Now Woodland Cove, just a quarter mile down the road, paid about two hundred thousand for a hundred and fifty units. Connected with the looped water main, which equates to about one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars per unit. If there are a universal or fair charge for water connection per unit, I can see about fifteen hundred dollars times twenty units. Which would be about thirty thousand dollars as a fee for my property. We questioned the water superintendent as to why I should pay for the water main loop that benefits the water system in whole for Wareham. Should this not simply be a capital improvement cost that is divided amongst all rate payers fairly? He stated there was no benefit to the water system at all. We also inquired of the review engineer if there was a technical reason. Why the water main needed to be looped versus simply using the hydrants as flush points like in many other dead-end subdivisions. And there was not a technical reason identified. So we stated the obvious, if this does not benefit anyone else, then why would we be asked to? Tell me, we got disconnected again, oh no, we're not disconnected. Why would we be asked to, uh, for such a request?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
Like that, I'd like to ask, um, when this project started and the permitting and the beginning of the project. Were they talking with the Wareham Water Department, or were they talking with the onset water department?
Let, let him finish, uh, Richard, let the gentleman finish and.
I thought they were done, I, I see it muted.
We'll discuss this, okay?
No, the, we had a tough connection there, sorry about that.
Go ahead, keep, keep going, you, keep going, are you done?
Can you hear me, okay?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. The water commission was to take it under advisement, and we would discuss it at the next meeting. At the next meeting of November tenth, they appeared to be no follow-up in our discussion, they presented me with a new set of regulations dated November first. They reported they voted somehow between my last meeting and this one. The chairman of the commission then asked if I would work with a commission member as a liaison for, for us, and we agreed to do so. All technical review of the project was completed between the review engineer for the water department and the applicant. We made all requested changes except to show the looped water main. We agreed to install three valves of Redbrook Road, change our valve type they preferred, met with the fire department, and voluntarily added. An additional hydrant to protect the neighboring property, which is a trailer home or a trailer park. Completed the design requirements for the state highway connections used and needed by the water department for a loop across Cranberry Highway. After all that, the commission member liaison refused to continue discussions until we showed the looped water main on a revised set of plans. I further explained that I would show the looped water main if we came to an agreement that my fees were to be waived or some other compromise. Since they terminated discussions, I find myself before this board requesting simply. That you issue the connection permit for the approved and recorded plans. And determine that a fixed fee in the amount of thirty thousand dollars be paid as a system development fee. And that the water department tap and install the eight-inch water main. Redbrook Road to my property within thirty days of that fee payment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you, let me, uh, just let me explain to you how, uh, I, I guess you're not from our town. But we have a system development fee, this is just tapping fee, whether in onset and Wareham, this money you just pay it. As a privilege to tap in on the line, and you, as a developer, and everyone who is listening as a developer, you do your own tapping. Uh, I think especially with the eight-inch line, usually one-inch line for a house, the onset water department or the Wareham department would do the tap for you and charge you as well. I believe they do the same thing in onset, so now going back to the houses, each individual house meter, uh. I don't know what the fees in onset, I know in Wareham, nine hundred dollars, you're saying that three thousand, David, in your area for each house?
So, when I have the opportunity, I would like to respond to all of that, um, there are many.
Let me finish my thing, my thought, but just let me know, is, how much you guys charge per meter, uh, that privilege?
For, for a one-inch connection, so when I first started as superintendent in May. Uh, many, many projects were, uh, started, one of them was the update of the rules and regulations. Uh, the update of the fee structure, uh, the update of the construction specs, updates of uh emergency response plan, quite a bit is being worked on. So, the rules and regs, uh, fee structure was updated on November first, but that was a, a, a many-month process. Uh, evaluating neighboring communities, uh, feedback, uh, between, uh, the consulting engineer, myself, and the commission, so that's. Again, I have quite a bit that I need to address with all the comments that were made, which. Um, Mr. O'Brien is aware of the inaccuracies of his statements, because I've already corrected them at, at meetings that we've had in the past, so. Whatever questions need me to answer, uh, Nazir, let me know, and then I would like to respond to everything that Mr. O'Brien said.
Okay, but he was, he was saying about each house, each unit, it's like three thousand dollars, is this what you guys charge?
Four thousand five hundred dollars per one-inch connection.
For each?
Correct.
Wow, now, unfortunately, that's that fair, that price in onset Wareham would be nine hundred thirteen dollars.
Right, Wareham also charges a lot more for their fire, uh, flow, uh, connection, so it's all relative in the law.
Right, so, and then I guess they give you a meter and spacer for this. Now, let me, let me go back, let me explain clearly, on the forty B, what we can do and we cannot do, uh, Mr. Uh. Just your name again, sir, from.
Candias, I'm sorry, Jim O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien? Is it?
Jim O'Brien, yes.
Right, the, the Wareham, the Wareham zoning board of appeal has jurisdiction, when there is a forty B project, has jurisdiction. Over the water department to, to give you water or not, so if the zoning board of Wareham, uh, the zoning board of appeal says. Onto water department, you have to give them water connection, they cannot say no, same with the sewer. Now, the technical aspect of it, the Wareham zoning board of appeal cannot impose. Technical and codes and spec, specs they use. The water department, we cannot, let's say, if they say it has to be eight-inch line, we cannot tell them, oh, we want a six-inch line. I make an easier example, uh, we, we granted to you, and I know you said you had on the plan. The water lines and all these plans, the water connection, however, same with the building, you had houses. But it doesn't mean, uh, we approve the houses, you could go to the building commissioner and say, oh, I want two-by-four, not two-by-six, and the building code is two-by-six. So if we approve the plan with the water line showing, but we didn't approve the specification of it, same with the building code, we didn't approve. Whether you use a two-by-four, two-by-six, two-by-eight, we didn't approve was you use copper or plastic for plumbing. These, each department will have to enforce their rules, same with the water department, so if the water department says the specs and rules says. You have to loop the water, I guess there's something to take, to take it up with them. The question also become, and I asked the water department, what happened if the, if the gentleman cannot loop it. Through the easement, or he can't loop it on the highway? That's become like, that becomes a problem, so I wanna ask you, Mr. Candias, to give us your thought on this, and we go forward.
Uh, so I've gotta, I've gotta hit a bunch of points, uh, Mr. O'Brien references, uh, the water department will make the connection, he's, he's referring to the service line. That has nothing to do with water main, it's already been addressed in a previous meeting, it's frustrating to repeat. Uh, and correct some misstatements that have happened again and again from Mr. O'Brien. Uh, to, to premise all of this with Mr. O'Brien not understanding that we require a looped system. Mr. O'Brien was in charge of the permitting process for Woodland Cove, Woodland Cove has a requirement to be looped. They agreed to it, it is being done, they are also looping across Cranberry Highway. Accomplishing the same thing, which is crossing four lanes of highway, it is a process, you have to go through the DOT. Uh, there is an easement on, uh, Mr. O'Brien's property to get to Cranberry Highway for sewer, we would use that same easement. Um, in regards to, uh, costs and fees, that is onset's purview. We have a fee structure that, again, was many months in the process to update, because it was outdated by some nine years. Uh, so we updated that, we're also, we updated the construction specs, it is clearly listed in our construction specs that there will be no dead-end, uh, mains allowed in the system. Uh, because it's been done in the past, doesn't mean that's a good idea to continue doing, uh, things that are bad for, uh, water quality and for the system in general. Um, to develop a system, and for, like you explained, Nazir, about, uh, the connection fees. That is for the entire improvement of all of our water system, not for the improvement of that one developer's, uh, development. Um, again, uh, the discussions, he is in pre-submital phase of his development, so. Until that pre-submital is complete, which requires an updated set of plans showing the connection on Cranberry Highway. We cannot continue, we cannot go to the next step, which would then be to discuss all the fees. So until that has been submitted properly, and by the way, it would be an eight-inch connection off of Cranberry Highway, not a twelve-inch connection. Uh, so there are two eight-inch connections, one off Cranberry Highway, one off of Redbrook. Uh, and then there are the individual one connections for each of the homes, so that is the standard process for all of them. Uh, the developer pays all those fees, we are not responsible for that. Um, the three valves that he's, uh, has to put at Redbrook, that's required, just as it was required for, for Woodland Cove. There are four developments currently, uh, in process and different phases within onset. Every single one of those developments is required to provide a looped water main system, none of them. system. None of them have been given any variance off of that. Even a small development of seven homes is required to put in a looped water main system. They've agreed to it. All other systems have agreed to it and have shown it on their plans that they are looping that main in. That will not change from the Onset Water Department. Um, as far as, uh, many other issues, that can be discussed once the pre-submital requirements have been met. So this discussion of cost of, so, so the other discussion with cost of, of, uh, a scale of, of, uh, economy here. So a hundred and fifty rental units, I'm supposed to somehow, uh, give a waiver so that because his development is less profitable than another, that, that, the water department is supposed to, uh, take a loss so that he can make a greater profit? That we didn't design plan, we didn't tell them how many units to build. We're saying the requirements based upon what is needed for that system is X, Y, and Z. So that's up to the developer to decide how many units they want to build. Their, their, uh, profit margin and how much it costs per unit has nothing to do whatsoever with the infrastructure required for that development. So I, I really wish Mr. O'Brien would stop with that whole uh, economy of scale and what he's spending per unit and what Woodland Cove is spending. It, they're not the two, they're two totally separate developments. And each developer decided what they wanted to build. We're just telling them the infrastructure required to provide the water for that system. Uh, it's pretty straightforward. Pre-submital requires, uh, a, a series of steps. The last step, which is all they are is, that's holding them up, is to show on the plans the connection on Cranbury Highway. They will have to pay for the cost of the crossing. They will have to pay for all the connection fees because every developer is paying that. There, there are no special privileges for anyone, whether it's a forty B at Woodland Cove or any of the other developments that are going in, that they understand. I've got a developer who was pre-approved from years ago, who is frustrated with me because I'm holding them up because I'm requiring him to do all the same things I've required Mr. O'Brien and Settlers Glen to do. So he's frustrated with me as well. And unfortunately, I won't give special privileges to anyone to allow the water system to suffer so they have an easier time or convenient time, or they want to live in a past era when they were allowed to do it. We are not going to allow Onset Water Department to slide backwards in progress and to degrade our water system further because someone in the past was allowed to do it. We are setting standards and rules and regulations in place. Unfortunately, it does take time. I wish that these were all done the day I started, but they're not. So the rules and regs, uh, the fee structure, the construction specs are all ongoing projects and some of them are complete, some of them still ongoing. So we can't offer him a complete package on the day he approached us. But again, let's remind everyone here. Mr. O'Brien was involved with the Woodland Cove permitting process, was required to have a loop system. He understood that onset, even though it was not in writing anywhere in our rules and regs, required, we set the precedent that we required a loop system for Woodland Cove. So he was well aware of that before he purchased Settlers Glen. Settlers Glen, on another note, and Mr. Buckland can, can back this up as well, Sonia. For some odd reason, when Settlers Glen applied for that permit, the Onset Water Department, prior to me working for them, was not notified of that permit process beginning. So we had no opportunity for input to tell them that these were the requirements that were going to be expected of them. So there are many, uh, things here. Unfortunately, for some reason, the planning department, uh, did not send the information over to the water department. They weren't notified that this project was starting. So we started from a negative. Uh, Mr. O'Brien bought a pre-approved, uh, plan from a previous owner. Um, someone along the line didn't do the due diligence to find out if there were going to be any, uh, requirements from the water department before they set their plans in motion. Uh, to ask anyone else to determine the cost structure and the fees, uh, is completely inappropriate. And again, we cannot discuss the fee structure until the plans are submitted, accepted by the water department. And then we can sit down and talk about those two connection fees and the, all the one inch connection fees. Uh, and then we have a total based upon the current water rates, not based upon whatever rates he thinks. And him, Mr. O'Brien determining what our rates are going to be and what he should pay is kind of a ridiculous statement. And so the Onset Water Department is pretty firm. We have water rates. They're established as of November first. We do not currently have a water agreement. So there are no rates that were discussed in the past. He mentioned rates in meetings. But those rates were meaningless because we did not have an agreement in place. So his agreement, if we ever get there, he submits those plans, will be based upon the rates at that time, which we know the rates were updated on November first, uh, posted on the website. So I, I know it's a lot to absorb. Uh, but again, this is the Onset Water Department's jurisdiction and we believe we're running the department the way it needs to be run to improve the, uh, water quality for the whole system. It's not about one development, it's about the whole system. So unfortunately, uh, that's where I stand.
Thank you, Dave. Veronica, what do you think of this?
What do you think? I, I mean, I, I, I don't know. I think it, I mean, it is what it is, I guess. Um, I don't know the regulations on when, when things have been approved and then, you know, rate changes and how that affects what's happening. Um, but like you said, it's up to each department to determine how it has to be done. We just approved the the, the whole thing as a not specific.
Right. Again, again, like I said, we don't, I mean, if you go out right now to the building department and pull a permit and it costs five thousand dollars a unit and two months later it costs two thousand, you can't tell the building department it was last year two thousand dollars. So, and we don't dictate those. We only give a permit. That's it. All right. Troy, do you have a say on that?
I, 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 I have to agree. I mean, we have to go by what the town is permitted, what their, um, their rates are at the time, at now. You know, it's not like we could go back in time.
Okay, Richard?
So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get a gist of this. Um, Settlers Glen purchased um, the property. They did a lot of work to get it approved, go through the ZPA. When did they find out that onset was going to be? When did they find out that onset needed to be, um, asked or informed that they were going to be tapping into it? I mean, it sounds to me like the piece of property was bought and they didn't realize that onset had the say of how the water went. So I mean, I'm just, I'm confused. Did, did they know in the beginning that it was onset's water or did they know, assume that it was Wareham's water? I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, I, I would say, I would assume six half a dozen. I mean, whether it's onset, Wareham, wherever you tap in the water, you have to follow the rules and regs. It's, it's not anywhere you go. It's no brainer.
So that's the bottom line. You just follow the regs, right?
Yeah, you gotta follow the regs. Now, in that case.
And the fee, and the fees go along with it. Is that correct?
The fees go along with it. However, because they're forty B, they could appeal to mass housing and say it's, uh, financially uh, not feasible for them, but that's, that's not us. They'll have to go appeal to the state and who knows what the state gives them.
I'm just kind of a little jealous because I admire the onset's quality of, I know that Wareham has been working to try and clean up our water. But let me tell you, I live on an end of Wareham. I've got brown water every so many weeks down the road. And it's, and I'm just, I, I am just don't want to see that happen to onset if it can hap, if it doesn't have to happen. I would like it not to, whether it's the state, whether anybody else. It's a pristine water system and I can't believe that we can be overruled by the, the state until.
No, no, they, I don't. I don't think, Richard, the state would overrule the looping. They might overrule the fees though. I don't know, but that's up to mass housing. But I do not think it, it becomes a jurisdiction of water and codes and stuff. I don't think this, the mass housing would say, no, you don't have to move it. No way. They'll say, we need good quality, but I don't know about the fees. So we leave this up to them. Jimmy, what do you think?
Um, very little. Um, what's, what's before us? The question is.
Before us?
Yeah.
I guess, Mr. O'Brien don't want to pay the fees and don't want to loop it if he doesn't have to, correct, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I take a minute to qualify a couple of things?
Yes, sure.
Uh, first off, to answer the board member, we're before you to request a connection permit and a fee amount. That specifically and the only two things we're asking for.
If you asking, what are you asking?
For the ZPA to issue the connection permit. The eight inch water main on, um, Redbrook Road. We understand, our application was filed September twenty eighth, not after eleven one. So we understand that a fee connection for that would be forty two thousand eight seventy, which was in place at the time we filed our application. There isn't even a question as to whether the fees wouldn't go back to the point at where the comprehensive permit was approved, which happens to be the same fee structure. So it's irrelevant. In respect to your comment about the building permit, I would and do understand when I pull the building permit, the day I call it, I'll be susceptible to the fee structure at that date and that's okay. Uh, no different than with the water department. I'm susceptible to the eight inch fee structure at that date. This board and Mr., uh, I'll just say Dave was the, I can't pronounce his last name. He was not the superintendent at the time that this project and through the, um, ZPA process. So we bought this project as an approved project and in fact, the water department, I'm sure the ZPA did not neglect to do its job and send the information to the water department. In fact, the review engineer confirmed, and I can get an affidavit in writing, that he met with the water superintendent at the time, not once but twice to discuss the project. We, uh, understand clearly that the fire department has input, conservation has input, water department has input. And they did draw an eight inch line as a main line with one inch line servicing each unit. And the fire hydrants, I needed two. And all of that is designed to enter the cul-de-sac. So the water department did have its review process through the ZPA. And we did our due diligence and bought a project that does not have a looped water main. And there's no technical reason to put one in. I understand that they may want it for the quality of water. And I'm willing to cooperate with that process. The easement that I have to install the water in already has a designed sewer line down the center of the easement, which is only twenty foot wide. According to the regulations, water has to be ten foot in separation anyways. So if I did allow the water loop to go in and work with the water department on it, there would be significant grading and process I would need to do to install both lines within the twenty foot easement. The Woodland Cove project, Dave wants to bring it up when it's convenient for him to talk about the looped water main and not when I want to use it as just a reference that a cost per unit seemed high to me. The looped water main for Woodland Cove, I did permit, I did approve, and it is on the plan as a looped water main. There is no issue there and no one's talking about that looped water main as an issue. The plan I purchased to settle this land does not have a looped water main. It has fire hydrants, services and everything required. And then we went through all of the process with Dave's review engineer and our engineer to ensure that the construction specifications of installing that line as it's designed meets all the requirements of the water department. That has been done. And the review engineer le, letters show that and we've accommodated everything in the vast far. So I don't know why I have to change a design or add a looped water main or anything else when the water department was involved, did review the plan, the ZPA issued the comprehensive permit. I have a design and I'm willing to pay the one connection fee for the eight inch main. That's why I'm before this board.
All right. Uh, let me ask you, David, where, where they tapped, did they have to pay the other eight inch tap as well? For the system development fees?
Uh, yes, they'll, they'll be paying. They will have to pay both.
Two taps.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have two eight inch taps. And again, um, you can speak with Sonia and Ken. I've spoken with Sonia and she verified that there was no information sent to the water department when the application was put in, when the previous owners had that development. Again, before my time, I can't go back and, uh, say that I was there in the room at the time. We have no sets of plans anywhere in the building that predate the ones that was submitted in September. Uh, I've gone through every single map that's in the, the map room and organized them all. I've never found one for Settlers Glen, any old examples, none of it. Um, and again, it's unfortunate that Mr. O'Brien doesn't agree with it. But we will have all mains looped. It's just the requirement. It is, we've already set the precedent. Every other development has agreed with it. It's unfortunate that it does incur an additional cost, but it is required by the Onset Water Department and, and just, it's a non-negotiable item. And you can put sewer and water within ten feet of each other if you sleeve, uh, the sewer line. So there, there are options in there for that to all work out. And, uh, you know, we're, we're going to do whatever we can. But again, until we receive plans showing the looped connection on Cranbury Highway, the permit, his application for service is not complete. He is in pre-submital. Once all of the outstanding items, in this case, only the plans, showing the loop system, once that's submitted, reviewed by our consulting engineer, then we can proceed with establishing a water agreement, which would then be discussing rates and fees. So the, the application does not determine the water rates. That, there, an application is not an agreement. So on the date of the agreement, the water fees and rates at that time are what will be established. So again, we can keep talking about, you sent that application, we can talk about that, that, those plans are put in thirty five minutes. It won't change the fact that it, one, once we have all the pre-submital items in our hands, we've reviewed them, then we can speak about water fees. Until then, we can't move to the next phase. We are not holding this up. Settlers Glen refusing to send in plans showing the loop is the only thing holding it up. We've been asking for that since September, October. I don't know the exact dates. We've been asking for those plans since then, and that's the only thing holding it up. We would have approved this four months ago. If that had been done and then we would have sat down, we would have talked about the fees. It was pretty simple. The reason why the, the, uh, liaison from the water commission stopped communicating with, with Mr. O'Brien is because he became belligerent. Uh, and he was unwilling to submit those plans.
Point of order, point of order. I don't appreciate that at all. I did not become belligerent. He has an email stating that he would not communicate till I did this looped water main. And I'm not doing it because the zoning board of appeals approved the design that's before the water department.
I think the zoning, the zoning board just agreed that, um, they are not the authority.
David, if I may. All right. The, I, the way I see it, there's two scenarios. Uh, we could, uh, we could tell, um, the, or a commissioner here say, okay, we're gonna give the guy a waiver and the commissioner could say, well, I'm not giving you connection. Let's, I'll see you in court. Or we could tell you, uh, you have to agree to the commissioner and pay your waivers and you can take your case to the mass housing and fight it there. So either way, it's gonna be a fight with you. My recommendation, you have, my recommendation, you follow the rules of the water department and seek whatever, go after it with mass housing. If they could waive you the fees or not, but I personally, I'll see what the board feels like. I'm not going against their rules. Because apparently they impose these rules and everybody on the, on the, in Onset and, and as Mr. Candia said, he's even doing it to seven lots of divisions. So I think it's only fair and it's only right to do it the right way. And if it was done wrong in the past, it doesn't mean we keep doing it wrong. We have to do it, fix it. You don't keep doing it wrong. Uh, I just passed my question. Jimmy, what do you think of my theory?
I pretty much agree with you. I, um, I see both sides of this argument. Unfortunately, both sides can feel they're right, but the bottom line is, is the subdivision going to be built or not? Uh, I, I, I think we need to kind of continue this. I, I, I'd like to make a decision tonight. I think it's important to, um, postpone it. Let both parties cool off for a couple of weeks or try to communicate for a couple of weeks. Maybe they'll come back in two weeks and tell us they've resolved this.
Okay, Troy, what do you think?
Uh, well, I, I kind of agree with Jim. I mean, they need to figure out the best course of action for this to go. I wouldn't go against the ta, the Onset Water Department myself.
All right, very good, Richard.
Your lips are moving, but your microphone is off.
Mute, mute. Take your mute button off. Push them, push the mute, yeah.
I know, Nas, I know. I get that. All right. Again, I'm not, I'm not going against the Onset Water Department. So.
All right.
I mean, it is what it is. It's, it, it is what it is. And I, in, in frankly, this is all turning into a nightmare down there and, uh, I'm on the side of the Onset Water Department.
Okay, very well. Veronica?
Um, I have a couple of questions to. Um, I have a couple of questions to, this surprised me, uh, just the even suggestion to do it. Do we have the authority to issue the permit and do we have the authority to set the fee?
No, we have the issue, we have the authority to make the onset water, water department gives them uh, gives them water. We have the authority to say waive the fee. I do not wish to, to waive the fee. But according to the specs, we have no authority. I I know what Mister Davis is gonna have, Mister Candias is gonna say about the case laws and stuff. I disagree, but this is not the case. So uh, the the zoning board have the legal authority under forty B to waive the fees. But apparently the board members don't agree to it. But definitely the specs, the zoning board do not have jurisdiction on the specs. Definitely. All right, that being said, yeah, go ahead.
One last comment. If if the board were to consider waiving fees, that would create an undue hardship on the onset water department instead of very dangerous precedent. We would absolutely fight that one to the Supreme Court if we had to. There's no way um, that I would stand by and let the onset water department be damaged. That would, that would damage us.
Yeah, I I totally understand, and that's why I will not agree to it. But forty B is tricky. But we're not even going there anyway, so it doesn't matter. So that being said, let's.
Mister Chairman, can I just ask a question?
Yes, Mister Extron.
Thank you. Um, what is the, um, or what would be? If the, if the uh, onset water department was never notified. And we have the town offices saying that they were never notified. We have the superintendent sitting here saying that there is no evidence that they were notified. Um, isn't that like, as far as forty B goes, you're supposed to notify all the abutters and the abutters to the abutters within three hundred feet. So um, is there any requests for the onset water department for that?
Well, the the abutters were notified. The onset water department, they saying they were notified handed plans and design, not notified as an abut. I'm sure they were aware of the project going, but nobody brought plan. According to Mister Candias, he said there was no plan brought before us to discuss. That's what he said.
I'm sorry, I thought he said that they were not notified.
No, no, I'm sure they were notified because there are an abut to the abut. But weren't you notified, David? I I don't think he was on the job then, were you?
I I was not employed at the time, but um, when I spoke with uh, Mister Pozo at the planning, she said that she couldn't find a record that the uh, notice of an application to the Z P A for that project had been sent. Because normally, the process that uh, happens is you would send out a notice to the water department to let, notify us that there was a development seeking a permit application to put in a development, which would in the future require water connection. So it puts it on the radar for us. So we can sit down with that that development and let them know what our requirements are for. And I and I understand where uh, Mister O'Brien is coming from Sadlers Glen. You come in with a notion in your head that you're gonna have a development go a certain way. And then you find out when you you've already made, you've already factored and know your cost, that all of a sudden now I have to do this additional work that I didn't plan on. But unfortunately for the onset water department, we weren't in the discussion early enough to let them know so that they could have planned earlier. So again, it it's unfortunate. I get where he's coming from, but we also have to be consistent within the onset water department. And again, it just it it it's not pretty for anybody, but we have to do the right thing. If they want to get a grant from the state to pay that other connection fee, that's fine. But the onset water department is a low-income community. We are a poor water system. We are underfunded on, we have millions of dollars of projects that need to happen over the next five years. And we have hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we are literally millions of dollars short. We didn't get any stimulus money from the town of Wayham. We didn't get any of those uh, grants from the state. But we, again, we are a low-income community. We are not a wealthy water department. So that's, that has to be taken into consideration. Where I'm trying to defend a a very needy water system and do everything I can to put in standards and protocols that going forward protect the water department so that we don't have the same missteps and mismanagement and uh, people taking advantage of the water department like has happened for many decades. I just don't, I want that to stop. And so I care deeply about the quality of the water and the and the infrastructure and the system improving every year. And to allow and to waive any fees is just taking us off at the knees and making it that much more difficult for us to do those very important and needed projects within the community. So it it's a, I get where Sadlers Glen is coming from. It's about profit. I totally understand wanting to make more money. But he, I hope he understands the importance of the infrastructure that's gonna, that is going to support his system. Is the water. That's one of the most critically important things going forward is the water quality uh, in any community. So I just um, I went on a little bit on that. Sorry for running off, but that's, I care deeply about uh, this water system. It's my, it's, I take it on as my responsibility to be the steward for as long as I'm there, whether it's two days or twenty years. So I think it's very important that every, and you all are doing the same thing. You all care deeply about your job because you care about the town and and you take your responsibility seriously. So it's important that we all continue to do that uh, moving forward, that we don't lose sight of our our, the very important uh, responsibility we each have to defend and protect uh, like they're our children, these these uh, places, these water departments, the town, uh, all the stuff that we do. So I I thank you very much. I'll mute myself now.
Thank you, thank you. All right. So what's the wishes? Want to continue?
Uh, I I still feel so we should continue, but I also want to bring to everybody's attention. I don't know if out of frustration, out of or out of a lack of uh, connection, it appears that Mister O'Brien has left the Zoom meeting.
Uh, I don't see it. I don't know.
As I look at my screen, um, so I just, I just.
Sounds like he's being a little, sounds like he's being belligerent to me.
Well, I don't, I don't know that, and I won't jump to that conclusion.
All right, let's continue.
Motion to continue, to continue.
All right, motion to continue by Jim on the twenty sixth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Veronica?
Aye.
And yes, myself as well. Yes. David, thank you very much for tonight, for coming. Okay, and uh,
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. And uh, okay, any other things before we adjourn?
Yeah, Nazzy, that's what I was here for. I'm sorry. It's Brenda Exstrom again. Sorry, you guys. Um, the um, I don't know if you've heard about the Supreme Court, Massachusetts Supreme Court that um, decided that they would take up um, uh, article, I mean, a lawsuit between um, Waltham and um, some solar company. Um, I guess the solar company, they built their stuff in another town and they want to use Waltham to get back and forth through it. Um, and they're claiming, like if you know the um, solar bylaw, I mean, the solar um, law, it's kind of like forty B, where if it's solar, everything's okay. And um, so, excuse me, the um, Supreme Court took it um, out of the um, appeals court. And they are asking for um, uh, input from local boards, committees, commissions, planning boards, zoning boards, conservation board of selectmen to um, give your opinion on um, if the um, what you call it, if we should allow the solar things to go the same way they are right now, like in, like forty B. And um, of course, you know, we have a solar um, bylaw rewrite committee right now. And right now, you guys don't have really anything to say about solar um, bylaws. It's, I mean, solar. Things, it's all going to um, uh, it's all at the planning board. But you guys are the zoning board of appeals. And one thing that um, I was hoping is that we're working on drafting a letter just saying that we think that the town should have more control over what goes on with solar plants or solar um, areas. So what I was wondering, I tried to email you, Nazzy, but I guess I had the wrong email. But um, if um, I could get like a drafted letter to you guys, um, or like the the gist of it. And if it's something that you guys could support possibly, or if you'd even be interested in supporting it.
Yeah, just send it to us. And we we have Mister Compy who's our liaison and um, in the, in the uh, committee, on the solar committee. And I I know they're revising the whole bylaws of solar panels and stuff. But yeah, we'll look at it. Just draft something and uh, and we'll look at it. Hi Keith.
You could.
So uh, we'll we'll definitely look at it. So that will go over it, okay?
All right, great. Yeah, just because I know that, like, like I said, with this, you know, Nazzy, you know how I love the zoning board of appeals. And um, but I I think that you guys should have some control over what happens in our town, you know, for the land use. So um, great, thank you. Um, are you mass living at AOL?
Correct.
Okay, great. All right, I'll I'll send it and then you can disseminate it out to the rest of the board. Thank you all. And I'm sorry I butt it in so much. I'll try to shut up next time.
No, it's okay. Brenda, you best bet, send it to Sonya and Sonya will distribute it properly to all the board members.
Excellent. Okay. Sonya Reposo, I got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, guys. Anything else more or motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye, Rich?
Aye.
Jim, uh, Jim? Hi, Veronica?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Aye. Ken over there, young Ken, we have a young Ken.
Can I, I'm just gonna make a note real quick. So I just look at the waiting room and I don't know, maybe it was connection, but Jim O'Brien and they just tried to join the callback, but you guys already continued it, so.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
I'm just gonna end it, then it'll be fine.
All right, and myself, aye. So thank you very much. See you on the twenty sixth.